Educating, Informing, Serving. TV Keeping Government Honest.
Ladies and gentlemen, sorry for your delay. As usual, technical issues are confounding us again. It's 6:35, so I'd like to call this meeting to a order. We are in the Town Hall, Lower Theater. There is a Zoom note on your agenda, so if you go on the Town Hall site, you can find it. Also, there's a phone number that you can call in to get into the meeting. Hopefully, everyone stayed with us while we got going. So, that being said, like, go to the agenda. Approve the minutes of November 15th. Take a motion.
I approve the agenda. Whatever.
Minutes. Alright, additions, corrections, deletions, omissions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, name, or who carries? Addition to the agenda for routine ministry management and the present matters that will require ratification at future meetings. I have none. Scott?
No, the only thing we were going to talk about is back in April when you passed your resolution for Cannabis Control Commission. I did send in some information to the state. They had requested that we send it in in the format that I had left copies of at your individual spots there. So, it's the same resolution we had passed previously. Make them a local commission. They just wanted it in that format. So, we could just readopt it and then we'll send it to them with the signature, then we can get ourselves registered as a local commission. Nothing has changed. None of our authorities have changed.
The only thing we're doing is signing a resolution.
Signing a resolution that you passed on April night.
Yeah, sorry, we just need to sign it, okay?
Yep.
Public comment on items not on the agenda. Three minutes per person.
Yes. Hi, Betsy Thurston of the Bell's Falls Downtown. Just wanted to update you all on the snowflake swag. We had Matt Shanks, Shanks Electric here helping us. It was like yesterday, was lit last night. Now, it's not lit again. He thought maybe after it stopped raining, he would look at it again. He texted me and said he's got some ideas. So, he's definitely going to work to fix it for us. We should have lights for the parade of lights, at least. And that is Saturday night at 5:00.
Okay, anyone else? Hearing and seeing none? I'm getting scared because his hand up there, I don't know. Alright, let's move on to manager before.
Yeah, just to give the board a quick update. If you remember, we had advertised for bids and we're working on replacing the recycling and tire shed, or the tire shed out at the recycling center. Or we keep the... If you noticed, it has a pretty severe lean and it's really becoming unsafe. We thought we'd have to wait until spring to get that project underway. We finally do have somebody. We've got three submissions, so we do have a contractor interested. We also now, because of the weather being so mild, have the opportunity now to have our highway guys go in and do the site prep work and spread some millings and actually then be able to do the construction over the winter. So, we're going to start that project next week. It looks like, again, we have a pretty good window of weather here. So, with that, we'll see some activity there. And then, probably the first thing you'll see is the old building coming down, so. Yep.
It's got the food, that's the food scraps building as well.
Yeah, there's food scraps on one side, tires on the other.
Yeah, well, access will be leading to a ramp or steps.
It'll just be at ground level.
Ground level.
Right, yeah, one step up. So, you won't have to step into it. It'll, it'll, we'll try to spread, we'll dig out a foundation, a small foundation to spread milling, so it'll have a nice, compact surface to work off.
Great. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, let's move on to agenda. Number one is appointing the planning commission. There is a application in your package for Remy Walker. He has one resignation from the committee, so I'll take a motion. Everybody has seen that.
I make motion to appoint Remy Walker to the planning commission.
Second that. You want to read the full motion because it's still in 2124. Your plan.
I appoint Remy Walker to the Rockingham Planning Commission starting December 6, 2022, to fill in the 2021-2024 three-year planning commission term.
The second is still in vogue. Anybody have any questions? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of Remy Walker being appointed, say aye.
Aye.
Although opposed, name, or who carries? Next item is authorize consulting services for, excuse me, Rockham Meeting House Historic Structure Report Update. Mark, there's a budget that was presented to those and there's a full range of people there to speak to that or speed up the question, so.
Yeah, just so everybody's up to speed. So, the full report's not done, but I think we're at a point, and especially with some of the budgetary impacts as we go forward, it was worth having this presentation tonight so the board can get a sense of the scope of what's been found and then some potential costs associated with some of those issues to bring the building up to standard. So, I think, Walter, did you want to make any other introductions?
I'll get it. Sir, is it okay to use this chair?
Yep, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, I'm John Ledman, in case any of you don't know me, and I'm the Chair of the Rockingham Town Historic Preservation Commission. And I will simply say in this situation that the Rockingham Meeting House is a subject that every select board gets to hear about. Every select board will always get to hear about. It's never going to be entirely off the agenda. The Rockingham Meeting House belongs to the town of Rockingham. The Rockingham Meeting House is 235 years old, and it is no surprise that it has some fairly significant structural concerns that need to be, that need to be addressed. Thanks to a public-private partnership, we've had a very thorough and still ongoing review of the needs of the building, done by the firm, Lisa Papazian, who is here tonight, Bob Neill, who I think is on Zoom, and Las Genghis, who was not able to be here. I'm going to pass this on to Walter Wallace to introduce Lisa, and we'll try to keep this reasonably efficient.
Walter? Thank you. Part of the efficiency is, I said no more than 25 words, but I've only used up half that. Speaking of conversation.
Ten minutes, right? Ten words.
Speaking of conversation when we left off back in early August, about the need for having a good, a good look in assessing the condition of the meeting house. We've been having some real challenges, I think, the last number of years, in keeping a pace with maintaining, according to our maintenance plan, a building that we just cannot keep up with. And so, we've decided, with the support of the select board and funding from the Vermont Historic Preservation Trust of Vermont, as well as some private donation, as well as some help from the town, the citizens through the reserve fund for the house. We were able to hire, I think, a top-notch group of people to do an assessment of the building. Lisa Papazian is no stranger to Rockingham. She has worked with the town over the years on other projects of historic preservation nature. She's been on lead. Now, her is the speaker, and I'll get out of the way so that she can while you with what has been discovered here the last several months as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Walter. Is this a good place to sit?
Yeah. Say that.
I'm afraid to speak up because those things don't pick up that well, so.
Speak louder.
I don't, I don't pick up that well either.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear the previous speaker.
Notoriously, yeah, low. Well, I, we, hello. Thank you for having us here. Bob Neill is on Zoom, so he's going to chime in at a certain point. Bob Neill is the Structural Engineer with Engineering Ventures. I'm Lisa Papazian, Historic Preservation Consultant, leading this team. There's Bob, hi, Bob. And Las Genghis of Arnold and Skangis Architects is the third piece of this triumvirate. We are the main team that has investigated the building. We're, are investigating the building. We are, this is an ongoing project. We are going to finish up with the full Historic Structure Report in the spring. But we've done most of the investigation and observation and poking and prodding and have gathered a huge amount of data. And we're still processing it, but we, this is a point where we have some conclusions and some costs and some ideas of what the needs are. So, I have 45 slides. We're going to zoom through this. I'm sorry, I know, I see your agenda is long. So, next slide.
Next.
Okay, so I can't see the top, but the work done by the team. In addition to the three of us, that's Bob leaning against the, the building there, is also archaeologist Tom Jamison, who is the one who does, did the, did the actual excavation for the foundation exploration. And Josh Laughlin, who's a restoration carpenter, local restoration carpenter, who helped us by carefully removing boards and then carefully replacing the boards so we could look under things. That's Las Genghis in the middle poking and prodding. And that's actually Bob Neill in the crawl space, which isn't very good. So, the things we've done so far are... Can we go one forward? Sorry, yeah. Okay, well, we've done, we've done research. I've done a lot of research on it, what has happened in the past 40 years on the building, and I have a spreadsheet of sort of outlining all that. There've been a lot of reports and a lot of assessments done in the past. Some work. And that, this is the stuff that we've uncovered. The other products that we've done, we've done a scan of the building, electronic scan of the building, which allowed us to then generate floor plans that reflect actual measurements. We've done a foundation map. Go back one, well, one.
Is this back one or that forward?
That was forward one, but that's okay. Yeah, that's the foundation map that Bob Neill created, which actually reflects every foundation stone and how they're not exactly where they're supposed to be. Other things we've done are, he's did a full structural report, plaster assessment, window assessment by Sally Fishburne, who's an expert in both restoration, a pew assessment, scope of work, architectural scope of work with the cost estimates. We did a 3D matterport tour, which is, if you've ever tried to buy property nowadays, you can actually virtually walk through a building, and that's what was done with this kind of 360-degree photography. And we can go forward. Sorry. And another one. So, some of the, I'm going to, this is the main slide. I'm just going to go through this. The future slides have photos of all the stuff, but this is the main things that we found. And that's a, you know, poster child of some of the rock that we found. That's the southwest corner of the building. So, there's underneath the clavards, by poking the all, we've discovered a number of soft spots that are covered by paint. There's also deflection that people who have visited the, the meeting house can see inside when there's, you know, sort of a lean to the balcony and cracks opening up. We found very fine and damp soils underneath the, in the crawl space, so fine that they're particularly susceptible to frost movement. We found lots of deteriorated window sash, even though sash has been, some of it is actually from 1981 and it's still, and it's deteriorated. And there's stuff, you know, things have been done to the sash to restore one or the other, I mean, to address one or the other, but they're still overall in pretty bad shape. A lot of dry and sun-damaged woodwork on the interior, very, very thirsty wood and making it very fragile. Plaster's only partially stabilized, not everywhere, for example, and only to a preservation level of treatment. So, you can see where they've injected adhesives. You can see all the cracks still, and not all of it is intact. The exterior paint is in pretty bad shape, although from a distance, it looks pretty good. But if you get up close, there's lots of places where the paint is not adhering or there's water getting in. There's other points of water infiltration that we found, holes under slate sheathing right at the roof line, open seams and flashing, unpainted bottoms of boards that suck up water. And this should, not too surprising, there are a lot of life safety and ADA code violations on this building for, you know, depending on how it's used. But even with very light use, the ADA ramp, for example, doesn't meet current, doesn't meet code, and there are no exit signs or emergency lights. Okay, so that's, that's sort of in a nutshell what we found. I'm going to go through these in a little more detail. I think, go forward. Yeah, these are just some of the images showing what we found. I mean, on the bottom left is an image while we were excavating around the foundations. It was a downpour, and this water did not go anywhere. It was, we, very poor drainage around the building. Okay, we can go forward. This is an example of the building scan that was done. It had, it has incredible detail, including the roof framing, and it actually shows idiosyncrasies in the framing, where things have dropped, where things are out of whack. Go to the next one. And from these, Las Genghis developed floor plans and elevations. And, you know, to those floor plans, he then went in and started adding pew numbers, and you can't, it's hard to tell, but like even where the benches are and where the supports under those benches are and where they're not, which is another problem. Next slide. That's an example of the elevations that Las developed. Next slide. Yeah, and this is the, the 3D tour that I was mentioning. It's a, it's actually an online now, and that, that link should work, but we can send it around as well and share it. It's very cool. You get to walk through the building virtually. And areas where you don't actually, can't walk through, like in the attic, you can take a number of 360-degree views. So, there are still images, but you can turn around sort of and see everything. Next one. And again, the archaeology. The map shows in red what we just did in terms of new test pits, and the map itself was test pits that were done in 1991, prior to another bit of work. So, this sets the stage for understanding what kind of archaeology is going to be required in the future, especially if we're doing major foundation work. Next slide. So, this is the structural report, and I'm going to let, Bob, can you unmute yourself? Do you want to, can you see these?
Yes, I can. So, yeah, this is existing conditions. Where, these are pretty consistent as we worked around the building with the test pits. And basically, there's, there's granite 14, 14 to 18 inches deep, roughly averaging around 16 inches. And then, there's about 10 inches of, of stone rubble below that. And, and then that sits on native material. And that's, that's pretty much it. We did do some soil test, testing. We had some analyses taken of the material so that we could understand the makeup of the soil. And it's, as, as suspected, it's had a lot of silt and, and some clay in it. And so, therefore, very frost susceptible. And so, we, we think a lot of the movement of these stones is because of frost heaving and combination of frost heaving and settling.
Next slide.
So, the, the framing systems, we were able to get in, in, in a couple places to be able to, to the total of four different places where we could see what was going on with the, with the wood framing. We took some moisture content readings throughout and found that the worst cases really were the sills, but there are also some fairly high moisture contents in, in the floor framing. There's some areas that we couldn't get to where you could actually see the, the soil was in contact with the wood. And so, we have some, some concerns about what the, the condition of the, of the timbers are in those areas. And so, the, the, the material in there, the, the soil is, is moist and damp. Grab it, you can feel that it's, it's got a fairly high moisture content in there. Then probably what's been keeping things in as good shape as possible is there's fair amount of air moving through there because of the cracks between the stones.
Next slide.
The, one of the things that has been going on that was noticed before we got here was some deflection in the balcony. And I, my understanding is that some of the windows have broken over the years as well, most likely due to that exterior wall moving, some frost giving there. The, the other thing that I think is going on here, you know, it sort of looks like the exterior wall is, has dropped. And it may be that the interior has actually heaved a little bit. If anybody's been in this building in the winter, I got to imagine that in late January, it's, it's pretty cold and there's no snow over the ground inside. So, frost penetration underneath the interior footings can be quite severe. And this, this sketch here shows, it's hard to see at the scale, but that straight line across there is, is horizontal. And both the left and the right side of that shows a substantial difference in the elevation of the interior versus the exterior. And it looks to me like the interior footings have actually raised a little bit.
Excellent.
So, we were able to do some analysis of the existing floor system at the first floor. There, there's kind of a combination. There are a few areas where we would propose some reinforcing to bring up to current codes. Some other areas, actually, the native framing was, was, was in pretty good shape. Mostly the aisles where the, where people would go in and out would, would need some work. And again, we do have some concerns about the integrity and the rot in some of the framing. The balcony, we're able to see some isolated areas. And we're saying the balcony at this point, for a fairly light, limited use, could be okay. And roof framing has, has some work done on it in the past. You can see in the picture on the bottom left that in the 90s, there was some support added to the purlins. And so, at this point, we are not suggesting any remedial work to the roof framing.
Yes, excellent.
So, we're starting to look at treatment options, and we, we think that based on the movement of the building and the movement of the stones, that we, we think it's imperative that we address the potential for frost movement in the building. And you can see some of the, some of these interior crawl space shots of the foundations moving around quite considerably. Next.
Next question.
So, the, the first option that we're considering is a new foundation under the existing. And the, the one thing to realize about this is that we would propose removing the stones, numbering them, keeping them in, in order, and resetting them on a new concrete foundation that goes down to frost up. And this, this would involve, is a fairly, fairly intense operation, I think, to get in and lift the building. Certainly not unheard of for a building of this size. And by lifting it, we would gain access to the underside to be able to see what the condition of the framing is, reinforce things, repair things, replace the interior footings, and replace the exterior footings with the stones put back in place and set the building back down on it. Next slide. We jumped there. The, the other option that we're looking at was a shallow frost protected foundation, and this could be done also by lifting the building all up at once and then resetting it. And, but it's possible that we might be able to do a more gentle approach to this by excavating and putting a shallow foundation, not digging all the way down to five feet, using insulation to, to provide the frost protection. I do have some concerns about this option. Mostly, I'm concerned that getting in and getting access to the interior footings would be difficult. It does not allow you, unless you jack up the whole building, it does not allow you to get access to the, to the timbers to be able to inspect things. And ironically, it may end up requiring more excavation of the exterior because we've got to put the footing drain out of it. So, there, there's some pluses and minuses. Next. And next slide. There we go. Oh, yeah, so what I said here, option one is the preferred solution. Next.
I think that's it.
Okay.
I, I should say that on the top of these slides, there, there were prices for the two options, which you can't really see. And I will just say that option one is $516,375 as current estimate, and the option two, $295,958, although there's some question about whether that is realistic and whether more, that might actually end up being more because of the difficulty of, of the second option, which is... So, I don't know, I don't know if there's, that's going to happen again with a couple other slides. I can just tell you what the numbers are. They're kind of hidden under the...
We could move the, the window to the bottom.
Okay, yeah. We know what our names are.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to gloss, gloss over the cost numbers.
No, it's okay, yep. Well, thanks, Bob. I, then in terms of the, the next section is about exterior trim siding and paint. That's the next biggest ticket item after the, after the other. And these are just some of the conditions. Want to go to the next one? We can just run through the next three. Looking, this, this is where flashing is not intact. Looking, this, this is where, um, flashing is not intact. Um, next one. Again, uh, paint problems and, and actual rot under the paint and some of the window heads. Next slide. This is that, uh, again, better, better pictures of that southwest corner, which it looked okay and just poke it in and the rod kept going. So we opened it up and this is what we found. Um, that's a picture of the condition of the front doors and, um, the southwest corner, uh, the cornice is kind of coming off or loosening up. So in terms of restoring, we are proposing restoring all the exterior trim and siding and proper paint job. And that's where, you know, about fifteen percent of clavards would be replaced in kind, um, with hand plane clavards. Uh, everything would be replaced in kind, um, that needed to be. There are a couple of specific areas that Laz is particularly called out here. Um, but in general, this also adds metal handrails, which are required at some of the door, the entry, uh, the door, the doors, um, for code. But it's, um, a lot of it is in the paint and the, and the prep, the proper prep for that. And, uh, three coats, two coats, one primer, two finish. We can move forward. Um, and on this, on the roof, I mean, the roof's okay for the most part, but there are some issues. Um, there are some issues where it intersects with the building itself, where there's drainage issues. There's, and the, the two on the right show, it's hard to see, but there are, those are gaps in the, um, the end of the, of the, um, roof. So there's actual opportunity for water to potentially get in. Next slide. So, um, those roof repairs and, and, um, making re- refinishing the, uh, the, uh, the flashing is fifteen thousand, six hundred, six hundred and seventy. Um, next slide. We had a window assessment, uh, done. Laz also looked at all the windows, as did I, but Sally Fishburne, who's a window restorer, uh, did a r- report. Um, this is the, you know, what she found is a range of conditions, basically eight windows ha- uh, from nineteen eighty-one, when they were replaced, the reproduction windows. Um, two of those have recently been fully restored. Um, but all the others are in a very states of, um, need. Go ahead, the next one. Um, a- again, the conditions of the windows vary, but one of the biggest issues you particularly see on the right, um, there's practically nothing left of the outside mantis. And so it's literally worn away. The wood is worn away and there's not, not enough to, uh, re-glaze to and to secure, um, paint and or, and the glass. So it puts it all at risk to just keep sort of, um, touching it up. And even on, on the left, that's, that's one of the re- reproduction sashes and it, it's paint is failing. On the interior, there's an awful lot of places where there ha- paint is failing and, and, um, UV degradation and just drying out wood have, have caused a number of other problems. So basically to get paints to adhere, um, the, you have to create lasting seals, fully restore the sash. Um, it really, all the glazing needs to be replaced. And so the sashes need to come out, glass should be removed and re-glazed. And, and that's also required to build up the wood on the outside by, um, Dutchman, you know, piecing in additional wood. But ultimately that's what we're re- recommending because restoration is possible. Um, there's a great example of the two sashes that are, that were done recently. And it preserves this very significant original fabric, which is most of the windows. And that's pretty unusual. Um, reproduction would give you, um, you know, a cleaner look. It's not actually that much more money, but it, you'd lose an enor- an enormous amount of the integrity of the property. Next one. So, um, the cost to do, and what we're suggesting, full restoration of the windows is a hundred and eighty-six thousand, nine hundred, another big ticket item there. Um, but everything would get reinstalled, um, and fully painted properly. As I said, the number on the bottom to re- reproduce the windows, um, two hundred, three thousand, four hundred and ninety. Next one. Um, ADA access. Uh, Laz is, as I said, the, the current ramp does not meet current code and on the outside, and especially the ramp on the inside does not meet code. And then even if it did, once you got in, someone, especially in a wheelchair, would have no place to go. And they, you know, you can't have an event with having someone stick, you know, stuck in the aisle. So Laz created another plan where the ramp has to be longer because it's too steep right now. So we took it to the side because if you went straight out, it would come, uh, be in front of the, front of the building. So off to the side with steps, um, coming straight out. And then on the inside, the ramp has to be longer, which would mean you'd have to re- remove the door that's there and, um, probably not hanging on the wall. So it couldn't ever possibly be closed. But, um, but at any rate, you wouldn't lose anything. And then you, you would modify one cue, possibly remove the door and a panel and keep it on site. But, uh, it would allow someone in a wheelchair to come in, get into the aisle and get into a cue where they could, um, be seated. And that's the price up top. So Sally also did a plaster assessment. There have been, two thousand and one, um, Rory Brennan did a whole, uh, proposal for full plaster restoration, um, which wasn't done. Um, pieces of it have been done, but not restoration. Preservation level bits of plaster, um, stabilization have happened. Um, some was done in two thousand and eleven and another, um, uh, set of work was done in two thousand and twenty, I mean, twenty twenty. Um, and so the total of fifty-eight percent has been conserved, but, um, yeah, sorry. Um, but, but only to preservation level, which means you can still see the cracks. You can still see, um, pieces that are missing. You can still see the example on the right, barely see it, but it's the, the sort of most fun example of graffiti. All of the graffiti on the walls historic, um, have all been coated once with, um, whitewash, probably in nineteen oh six, when this, the building was restored. So they're, they're sort of, they're ghostly, but, um, the other thing, um, we can go up to the next slide, sorry. Um, for the, the, there are pieces that are still delaminating and coming down. On the far right, the picture actually shows, um, on the left that they of, uh, what you're looking at is in the attic and we're looking at the plaster keys on the ceiling. That part has been restored and there are dark spots you can see, which were, which is actually the, um, the, uh, adhesives that were in- injected. But that's the edge of the gallery in the main ceiling, the part on the right, um, was never done. So that section that is the two-story section has never been done. Um, yeah, and the, in fact, uh, the preservation level has left the injection, um, holes and sites very visible. Um, and what, what Sally recommends is standard plaster rest, full restoration includes not only re-inhaling the plaster back to the lab, but, but also filling the holes and then covering them, feathering it, uh, so that it's prepared for, uh, refinishing. And she would suggest, um, whitewash, another whitewash treatment, although avoiding either all the graffiti or the most significant there. That's, that's an area of, that needs to be further discussed, I think, in terms of how to treat that. And there, there are options and different ways of doing it. You can go to the next one. These are some of the costs, though, for just the preservation level, which is what has been done to, to date, would be eighty thousand dollars or full restoration of that same, um, plaster would be ninety-three thousand. That's what we'll recommend. And again, to, um, in addition to do the, um, agreement, the already conserved pu- plaster up to a restoration level would be another twenty-four thousand. And then the coatings, um, would be thirteen or eighteen, depending on when it was done. It might be additional setup if it was done later. Okay. Um, yeah, briefly, I did a few assessment of the pews in the building. They were done extensively by Chris Cole in two thousand and five. Very little has changed. Um, much of the stuff he recommended has not been done. And so there are some small places where, um, repairs need. There's some broken, but the areas, but the most, um, like you can see where a railing is pulling out of, uh, the intersecting railing there and their cracks. Um, but the, the picture at the top is something that is a concern to me, which was that there are many benches that are under supported. I mean, there's, there's no, you can see, there's no support under that bench, under that L-shaped bench, except far in the corner. So there's a number of places where that is the case. It's a concern. Um, all of the wood is fairly dry, like much of the interior. So cleaning and lightly sanding and just re- re-moisturizing it with a wax finish. Um, on the first floor, it'd be sixty thousand, five sixty-six, and second floor, thirty-nine thousand, um, one ninety-three. So basically a hundred thousand to do both floors. Okay, the next one. Um, so to continue in terms of the interior treatment, um, the conditions we find, mi- there are mixed conditions, areas that have paint, um, it's a sort of light thin wash on the woodwork. Other areas where it's natural are very dry, worn, um, stained and vulnerable on the, especially the flooring. Um, there's some, some small pieces of broken areas. Um, so the treatment would be to re-clean, lightly sand, prep and repaint the painted woodwork. The price is, uh, forty-seven, four seventy-nine, and then the flooring to lightly sand and seal it with an oil-based sealer, not refinishing it, like not re-sanding, like you think of refinishing the floor, just lightly, um, to really give it, um, the moisture it needs to protect itself, to be protected. So those prices are below on the first floor and the second floor. We don't have a estimate on the repair, but it's not gonna be a big number. That's okay. You can keep going. Then the other issue that was, we looked at or that Laz looked at is the, um, code issues. And there's plenty. Um, so the, as you can imagine, life safety, building code current is, um, is, you know, pretty, requires quite a lot for assembly use. So, um, the minimum construction requirements are, without a sprinkler system, um, assembly use with three hundred people or less. But never, but you can't, um, on the second floor. But that's, that's just capacity. That doesn't include all the other issues, which are like means of egress. So the doors do not meet code, um, in terms of means of egress. They shall not be less than thirty-two inches. And that's, I'm not gonna read all of this, but the door hardware, there's issues. There's obviously no panic hardware. The doors actually swing in. And to change a door swing is not that big a deal on many historic buildings, but on this one, it's a big deal. It changes the entire look of the door, the depth that you see, um, and the, and the hardware is original. Next one. Oh, the, yeah, the, the e- the exits are also, you're not allowed to have a door open onto a step or two steps in this case, and that's what we have. And we would have to, you know, build up in front of the east door, not just the west door where there's a ramp and the front door. Um, whoops, let's go back one. And again, the stairs are to the upstairs, even if we could use it lightly, um, for light use, the stairs and the doors at the top of those stairs are real problematic. And there, in terms of, um, the, i- if you've ever gone up those stairs, you know that a regular foot doesn't even fit on the treads. It's, it's particularly, um, dangerous. And the handrail requirements not even close. And the door swing literally opens right onto a step from the inside. So on so many fronts, a lot would have to happen to alter all of that, um, to allow the upstairs to be used, which doesn't seem like a good trade-off, really. So next one. We feel like the minimum that is definitely necessary to, um, bolster the, the use that is happening now is, um, to the attic's interior exit signs and some emergency lighting. There's, there's limited electricity at the site that currently operates a security, um, alarm system. Um, so that could be added. Now, a full detection alarm and communication fire detection system could be added and, but it might, if, if the occupancy was kept low, it might not be needed. Um, and so we're planning a com- communicating, um, a conversation with the code officials, the Division for Historic Preservation and, uh, our team to all sort of talk through some of these issues on site. It obviously brings up a lot of conversations that need to, that the building owners, you guys need to think about in terms of the future use. Um, so just sort of finally, finally, um, a couple of things. You know well that the Rockingham Meeting House is a national historic landmark. It is because it's the oldest surviving public building in Vermont, but its level of integrity, both in its design, um, as a second, um, generation meeting house and its materials, its remaining, uh, original fabric, that's what's exceptional about it. And that's what gives it its status and its significance, is it, is that integrity. So you have to balance the preservation of that, then integrity to all the fabric with its continued use and meeting code. Too much change in the form of rehabbing it to meet those assembly codes in order to have events, bigger events, um, it really can, um, undermine your ability to raise the money for that because, uh, you know, its importance is it's, it's not changing. That, I'm not saying that very well, but, um, I think we're good. Yeah. So anyway, um, what we're proposing is preservation and restoration of historic fabric, especially in order to protect that fabric and protect any investment that you make in the building. So next slide, there are two more. In the past, interventions have added like, added things like the ramp, but haven't taken anything away. Um, underlying, you know, original design problems like roof, um, inadequacy have been, um, addressed by adding, uh, roof supports without taking, again, without taking anything away. And that, I mean, although it's dramatic, the foundation we're proposing also doesn't take anything away. It puts a new foundation underneath and places the stones back on it. Um, but it would protect all the other potential restoration. Um, in the past, that restoration has been subject to continued movement and, um, loss. So the last slide is one more, I think. Yeah. So we're proposing, no, sorry. The restoration of the windows, the restoration of the plaster, light cleaning and conditioning of interior woodwork, um, sistering and amplifying the first floor framing, um, to continue to use it, um, successfully on the downstairs. And then in-kind repair of the, you know, restoration of the exterior trim and clavards, and then the foundation work. We, we suggest the full, um, lifting of the building so that you can really address the underneath, under, what's underneath. We don't recommend replacement of the plaster or replacement of the windows for the reasons I've already talked about. So thank you. Sorry if that went over. But, um, and thanks for your attention. Appreciate it. And, and I have, yeah, questions.
Just, um, will we get a copy of that slideshow?
Yeah, I, I mean.
We could put it on the website and, um, the easiest way for you to see.
He says there's, see, it may have been there a sequence of which operation should happen for a second or.
You know, honestly, we, we literally just got some of these numbers and I haven't. and I haven't really fully thought about it. I think the next order, the first thing that would need to happen is you wouldn't put any money into the building until you lifted it. Right. And so that would be, the first thing would happen is archaeology prior, prior to that project. Still waiting to hear from the state about what the scope of that archaeology might be, partly based on what they found the last time, which wasn't much. So, but they suggested that be done, then the foundation, then I would, the foundation work. And then, you know, that, to lift the building, you have to take out the windows to protect them anyway. So that could happen together.
A quick question for Walter. What uses, I mean, I now, now we have dozens and tourists come in and walk around the place. We have a select board being there once a year. What, what are the uses or plan?
Historically, there have been weddings, oral services, celebrations, lights. There have been music events. Most common music events might be something like, two years ago, we had Third Sundays at Three Music Events, a fundraiser, where we had volunteer musicians come in, string a quartet, bell ringers from Saxons River, et cetera. They would perform for an hour, starting at three, draw crowds of anywhere between 35 and 50 people for, you know, for donation towards the upkeep of the building. We have had, for about 20 years, there was an annual event there tied in with the Roots on the River that could draw upwards of 200 or more people into the building. For a one-day event typically in the morning and through the later part of the afternoon. I will say, and I just looked over some of the use, the usage over the last 12 years, which we have records, and it has not been used much since COVID. We're sort of kind of rebuilding stage of people becoming aware that it is available and that people would want to come and use. Although I will say that we have had some people coming in, scope out the place for a wedding. Never hear back from them. I think that's in some measure because of the condition of the building.
Fewer than 300 people at all these events, many?
Much fewer, yeah, much fewer, yes. Now, the weddings can be anywhere between 25 and upwards of 100 people. I'd say that from what I've experienced this past year, I think we had two weddings there. And they drew between 50 and 80 people.
I mean, I think it all, anything over 49 is assembly use? I believe that's. I'm not hearing back here on that, but I think that's the case. Yeah. So I think one of the goals of that meeting that we're talking about having is the code officials and the historic preservation folks is to try to figure out what compromises could be made so that you might, might be allowed to have more than 49, an assembly use, without too much alteration of the building.
Good.
I, I might add to that, that Lisa mentioned that there is really probably no fix that preserves the integrity of the building to the fact that ingress and egress to the balcony is very difficult.
Right.
So no matter what you're talking about, you're talking about people sitting in general on the lower, in the lower floor of the building, with the possibility that if you had a wedding photographer or somebody who was going to be up there. The other thing I think of is sometimes at the annual co-menture, that brass choir up there. But the limit, the use of the balcony for anything like that would be extremely limited. And there's really no way around the fact that that will continue.
And just to build on that, when we did have the plaster falling issues in the east aisle back in 2019, it was decided, and the balcony is closed off for visitors too. So even, the visitation is only on the first level. Everything else is roped off. So we don't regularly stop around up there because the framing up there, you can feel it as you walk. Feel the movement up there. And know that it's weary, stressed and strained of the plaster work on the ceilings below. Anyone have any other further questions?
First of all, that was an excellent presentation. It's so thorough. It's hard to imagine what the past though. But that building is so important to our community. That's why I said tonight, and we're going to have to find some people that need donations to defend that building. It's going to be the statistic in the oldest, it's a foundation, I can't remember. Let's try to find people to help us keep order. Thank you.
Good. Good for me? Yes. Just picking up on that point, and it is the element, it's a really, it's a pretty extraordinary cost to talk about. And it's a cost that, the cost of the town suiting this property for, just not the town, for the region, but for the country. It's a national historic landmark. The National Park Service does have a grant program to support the preservation so that the larger community of the nation helps us, can help us support the preservation with what we've done here. It's already been reported that we do have a congressionally directed spending request. It's been approved, it's gone through, it's now sitting. Don't know if it's funded, it's through Bernie Sanders' office. Is for a $360,000 Save America Treasures Grant Program. Save America Treasures Grant Program was started back in the 1990s specifically to help save a national historic landmark, such as this. You have to be a national historic landmark. We have to have that level of significance. Now, the Save America Treasures Grant Program actually has a ceiling of up to $750,000. We've already had conversations about the strategy, about how best to approach. In fact, that's what generated the assessment and what will eventually end up with the Historic Structures Report. That would, that is the standard for the Save America Treasures approach. It is, however, a dollar-for-dollar match. And we're talking about a $750,000 ask from a grant, which has the support of the congressional delegation in Washington, does have the support of the Preservation Trust and from the Vermont Division for Historic Preservation. Certainly has the support, I believe, within the spirit of the town. We do have to raise other funds. I think that there will be a very strong effort, that there will be, there needs to be a strong effort, to be able to come up with that funding to be able to match that. If we are to preserve and conserve this for our grandchildren and our great grandchildren. I think that one of the points that's come out in this presentation is that there's some very severe issues that hands can kick down the road unfortunately because it's so expensive to do this kind of preservation work. But I think we're at a point where we need to be able to creatively address the need to stabilize from the ground up, the foundation work, so that we don't, so the town doesn't end up spending funds to repair something cosmetically when the foundation is insecure. That rather than spend money to throw more paint on rotting wood, that the rotting wood is making better. So thank you, producer.
Thank you. Jared?
Yeah. So, well, it would be the best thing to, to do everything in one project. Will the final report indicate, let's say if it had to be spread out over years, like, you know, have million-dollar foundation first, let, recommend its sequence? And which things would be in jeopardy of not being restorable if they went too, too long, that sort of thing?
Yeah. Honestly, we haven't gotten there yet, but yes, so that is definitely the intention.
Who else?
Thank you, so you know, let's, thank you both for coming in. It's informative. Thank you. Is that website, that's the link accessible?
The matter of course.
Yeah, through Lou's office.
The matter of course, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that.
It'd be interesting to just look at.
Absolutely.
Have them wait.
We'll make sure that, that this PowerPoint presentation and that link through the matter of course will be online.
Okay.
Do that first thing.
I think that works. When I put it down.
Good.
I see done, Lisa.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. I will send everyone a link. All right, let's move on. The next item, which is the authorized consulting services contract for hydroelectric property. It will form in your packet, which is signed by the board.
Just by way of a little background for the board, it falls here, maybe he can elaborate. We're in the beginning stages of looking at our next five-year tax stabilization renewal process. This particular valuation process is important to that discussion with the hydro. It's a very specialized type of work, as you can imagine, because not everybody sits on a river with a hydroelectric dam. So it's something that's very specialized. And this firm has been used by this board in the past and has continued to be sort of the leading resource for us in terms of foundational work that we'll need as we approach a discussion with the hydro and their owners and sense of where we're going to be as we go forward. So it's sort of the first stage in a long conversation we'll have, not only with them, but also to the listers. And this will provide some of that detail that we'll need as we sit down and start serious negotiations about how we might come to an agreement. Paul, is there anything else you want to jump in and throw into that mix?
I basically outlined what it is, what we're doing. Doing a little history. And I'll start with a very simple thing. I think several months ago, maybe six months, one of your members came to our office and sat down and very calmly asked us, what do you do? Quite honestly, the member's smiling. One of the things that's interesting, one that our answer was, well, we're really not sure. So we started a value engineering and analysis program for the department. We have changed the entire operations of what you would call the listers. So part of that value analysis was that we really didn't know how secure our grand was for. And that's kind of a scary thing to say because our numbers were correct, as you know, for years. But, so we started what is called a data verification study. And we started, and you'll see our poor little guys running around. We started looking at 300 properties that are residential or commercial. And we had to include the power station. And that was one more difficult because since the last appraisal, items have been moved. So we didn't know whose property was where. And they're moved, I don't want to say in the darkness at night, but they're moved whenever the power company has a need to move something. And you've noticed transformers have come and gone. There were one here, one's there, and it moved, where is it? So that was the reason to reestablish the value of this plant. Number one, there is a possibility that we will be demanded to do a reappraisal of the whole town. There are four ways to do that, and we need to decide which way we would. The security of our data is the key to that. So right now, we've engaged Mr. Stansus's company to redo the evaluation, let's say update the evaluation of that plant. That's compounded by the current drive to create green energy. It gets rid of coal-burning plants, et cetera. So this plant's actual operations could make a major change, which will affect its value. We do not know exactly how that's going to play out. But we want to be, are going to ensure we know where everything is and how much it's worth when that happens so we can do this. The town manager's been really helpful with this. We have a plan to look at it. And the plan is, what do you need? We'll get that for you. And by the time that junction hits us, we think we can probably make a decision to move forward with the select board and the manager to accomplish a reasonable and fair analysis of how much that might have worth to both the town and for the owner of the plant. That's where we are today. We're up to date. We, we toured the entire plant yesterday. We were down there six hours, crawling around underneath it, in it, over it, and out to all the transformer yards. When you go see it, you're going to see a transformer yard, but there are actually four owners of that transformer. The values depend on whose it is, run from the $10,000 to more. So we need to know who to send the bill to, and they've moved for that purpose. That's where we are. And I think that we've, by virtue of this little program that we first started with the questions, we have changed the outlook of this, of this lister's office from a clerical office to a service office. By that we mean, we are now trying to service every department in this town and all the citizens. So the invitation is, if you have a question, come see us. It will be instantly recorded on a computer database and it will be tracked there. So I can walk into the office tonight, push the button and tell you what every one of our listers has said, to whom, what he said, and where it stands. And that's something we never could do before. We just have to wait for somebody on vacation to come home. So everything is now online in our office. It is not public, so don't expect to find it on your website. And the reason for that is some of the conversations involve financial and personal data that we are not allowed to release. So you're not, we're not insulting you. We're protecting that. That's where I go.
All right, questions?
Yeah, so that dam is being sold yet again to, the dam, the power dam. I hear it's being sold yet again now to, back to Canadian company. How is, do you know, what's the timeframe on that? How that's going to, it's going to have any impact at all?
Yes, I do. The timeframe has occurred. The paperwork has not been processed. It will be processed within the next 60 days. The sale was made from what you know as Great River Hydro. It is, it is going to remain that name, it will not change, but the owner is Quebec Hydro.
So it was a $2 billion deal for the 13 dams, I read.
Yeah.
And the price per hour facility in this town, will that affect its appraised or its assessed value? If they paid twice as much as Quebec Hydro, Quebec paid for it X years ago, will that enter into the calculations of its worth to the town?
Yes or no? We don't value it on the sell price. We use sell prices as comparisons, but we're mandated to write on the, on the income basis. So what change occurs in the way it is used will affect that. And just for the number two million, there's a question, was it Canadian dollars or American? Was the first one? And the second question is, what did they buy? And they bought more than the Connecticut group. So that price is a little bit deceptive because it is not just this plant.
Oh, I know, it's 13, whatever.
It's literally everything that Quebec Hydro bought. And the name of the company is going to remain. But Quebec Hydro is a subsidiary of. But Quebec Hydro is a subsidiary of, I mean, Great River and is a subsidiary of Quebec Hydro.
So the value of the energy it produces?
Yes.
We can, we can tax on that basis?
That's exactly what we do. We tax on the amount of energy they sell. That's the first. We measure it three ways, but that is the mandated method that must be employed, set by the others. And then we have the freedom to exercise some limited judgment as to, and that's why we need to know exactly what's there. If we see a deficit that isn't covered by the income approach, we can then adjust it. Then they, they can easily challenge any adjustments. We don't make casual adjustments, so. We're pretty confident and I've been dealing with Dan Susie on this subject for about six months now. He, he's pretty well got his feet on the ground. We've got all the data we need. We should get a, a tentative data next month, this month. But we're good shape and we're pretty happy.
Anyone else hearing that? I'd like a motion to approve the the services contract for Sanz Susie Associates.
I move to approve the, what's it called, services contract? With Sanz Susie.
Wait a second. Both of you made the second bid to approve the contract with Sanz Susie for service contract? Any further concerns, questions?
Is, is there a ultimate amount that this contract is for? I noticed the hourly rates and all that stuff. Did I miss that or is there, is there a fixed amount?
There's a base contract. It's not to see, but it's a $40,000 contract.
The hourly rates are like, if they need to come and do some work.
Although they made the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Although both named, coming out for a second. Now, let's go this way. Hey, it's like Walgreens up with the outstanding resource water presentation.
I am. I was nodding there a while ago, but yeah, so thanks for having us tonight. What we're proposing is going to cost nothing and you all don't have to do anything. So I figure this is a good happy thing to be presenting. The Conservation Commission is interested in putting in an application for three different sites in Rockingham for out, that can, for the the title, but the designation, the honor of having outstanding resource waters in town. And it's kind of a lengthy process, but in my role on the Conservation Commission, I'm glad to do it. It might take a little while. We just wanted to let you all know right at the get-go. Details are still being worked out. There's a lot to do, but we wanted to have you in at the very beginning. So you wouldn't have any confusion or feel like we're going over your heads or anything. It's a kind of a set process. I think Margot's going to talk you through those steps. She's got some photos and a little more of the detail. But it really, this is a collaboration between the Conservation Commission, private citizens and with the support of Wyndham Regional Commission. So it's a really nice thing that way. And we're going to reach out to partners who also are concerned and interested about these these wonderful, amazing water resources that we have in our town. So Margot, I think that's what I have to say. Would you take over?
I should sit, I sit next to you?
Oh God, neighbor too, why not?
It's okay to stand up for a minute, I have to say.
Yeah, it's good to stand. So I'm excited to be able to share a little bit of information with you all tonight about outstanding resource waters. Just to clarify, so I am here representing as support for Rockingham Conservation Commission and citizens who are part of the committee from Wyndham Regional Commission of Natural Resources and Energy Planner there. But I also, just for full exposure, you know, I am a resident of Rockingham. So on that level too, I am very excited and interested in this topic. So because this is a PDF area, you're going to have to scroll, I think, instead of hit the next button. So if you could go next. Oh, got it. More than a scroll. So outstanding resource waters is a national, a federal designation. It's all 50 states have it. Here in Vermont, Vermont Act 67 is what sort of established and made the rulings for what outstanding resource waters in Vermont looks like. It does look different in different states. So what applies here in Vermont might not apply in another state. But it is a rivers policy and you can see here, provides protection to rivers that have exceptional natural, cultural, recreational scenic values. And we do have one example here in Wyndham County that is already designated an outstanding resource water and that's Pike's Falls in Jamaica. So next. So outstanding resource waters, why do it? So the, the, it is an anti-degradation law. So basically it looks at an existing site, where is it currently? And says, we want to preserve this amazing resource at the level that it is today. So it's not saying it has to be restored back to a certain level. It's not saying it has to, you know, anything has to be done to it. But what it does is protect it into the future so that we can keep those cultural or scenic or aquatic, you know, biological resources, whatever it's nominated for, protected. So for example, if a stream alteration permit was to be applied for in the stretch of outstanding resource waters, it would just say that it couldn't, it's not that it can't happen. It's just that it would be another layer to look at saying, what will, what's being proposed and will it affect negatively this, this stretch of water? So next slide. So there are three potential Rockingham outstanding resource water sites. These sites have all been identified in the Tactical Basin Plan, which there are tactical basin plans that cover the whole state of Vermont. We in Rockingham are covered under Tactical Basin Plan 11 slash 13, which is the West Williams and Saxons River and associated tributaries that come directly into the Connecticut River. So these are the three sites. You can see that there's the Williams River Scenic Area, the, which is around Brockaway Mills, Herx Cove and a site that we're referring to is Great Falls, which is, you'll see, I'll show you more detail in a second. So we'll go to the next slide here. So there are different categories that each site can be nominated for. So we went through with the MoD Department of the what D E C, environmental conservation. And we looked at each of the three sites and said, what are the, what are the values that come up for each of these sites? So for example, Herx Cove, there's water quality classification, maintaining habitat for threatened or endangered plants or animals, providing migratory bird habitat and accessing, existing usage and accessibilities for recreational, educational and research purposes and for other public uses. So we go to the next slide. So this map, it's, there's a lot going on on this map. But you can see sort of on the Williams River, which is sort of mid to the left, upper blue circle. That is sort of the proposed start to the Herx Cove, start of the ORW. And it would encompass, you can see a blue dotted line. It kind of forms like a if we hope I point my finger. There's a lot going on there.
Yes, it's starting up here.
So it starts kind of right before I-91 comes down into Herx Cove, encompasses all of Herx Cove and comes down into the Connecticut River point. So the idea is that everything within that waters, I should say, within that bubble would be what would be proposed for a nomination for outstanding resource waters. So next one. So Great Falls, as we all know, is an exceptional historic site and it's also, you know, archaeological site. It provides habitat, existing water quality. It has, you know, presence of historic resources. And those historic resources range everywhere from the petroclips through the canal, which is the first canal in the United States. So it's not just looking, you know, it's looking at all ranges of history and historic structures. So if we look at this next slide, so you can see the beginning is up near the, the bridge as it goes into North Wallpole. It encompasses the canal and the natural channel of the river and then down to just below, sort of where the the historical society property ends. And so the one thing about this particular site is that we do share it with New Hampshire. Not all of it is in Vermont. So there, there will still have to be some talks with New Hampshire and maybe some adjusting of the map as further discussions go, just because their ORW status process is different than ours. But at least the Vermont side of the waters, you know, is something that we can talk about with clarity. Okay, so the next one. So the Williams River Scenic Reach area, this goes, this area is amazing. Sort of under, not well-known area. Unless you take the train over it or you happen like, you live right there. It is an incredible riverside outcrop that really doesn't exist in other parts of the state. So it's very scenic. There's actually a presence of two very uncommon species, one plant, one animal that is in that area. And then it also fits the gorges, rapids, waterfalls and other significant geologic features. So if we look at the maps of the next slide, you can see that the blue dot there starts up on the Williams River, right around the Brockaway Mills Bridge and the dam that's right there. And then it encompasses the stretch of river through the gorge.
Well, the Sakoki Falls.
Sakoki Falls.
And then the gorge.
Then the gorge. And then comes around the bend and comes down through some lower falls to what's often known as like a sandy beach swimming area there.
Kind of behind the, the truck stop and the
The log land.
Logging area.
So that whole stretch of river there has a lot of very natural geological beauty and you know, geological importance. And so that's why this site was recommended. Okay, so we go to the next slide. So the ORW process, so this is a really, anytime you have something that's going through the state and going through such a big nomination process, it's quite a long process. So it's not like something that you submit the application and it will be done in a month. It's like, you'll be lucky if it's done in two years, the process. So the process is, is that a local group submits a petition, an application to the Agency of Natural Resources. And that's basically saying, we are nominating this site to be an outstanding resource waters and here's why. And then we go through the Agency of Natural Resources that will consider all of the, they'll look at all the data at those sites that have been taken by the Department of Environmental Conservation. They'll look at the rules. They'll look at anything that, you know, needs to be taken into account. They will hold public engagement process within the town. So, you know, it's not a, this is the only time that it would go before the public. In this actual formal process, right, there's public engagement in the process and then after consideration of all the relevant information, the Secretary of the Agency of Natural Resources shall designate the waters as outstanding resource waters. So that's kind of the formal process that it goes through and it's a process that got an initial start of a lot of excitement many years ago. And then it sort of went into a holding pattern. And now the Agency of Natural Resources is really promoting this again to really look at the importance of our waterways and the significance that they have not only in the communities that those waters reside in, but to all of us across the state and federally. So.
It's three applications.
It is three.
Each, each site is a separate application. So if one of them doesn't make it, say we run into snakes with New Hampshire, the other two still could end up being stars in our crown.
Exactly. And so each one goes through by itself. But we are, we decided because all three are such important resources in our community that we wanted to go forward with the process. All right, Steve, so we can stop sharing.
So yes, Steve Crofter and I'm not on the Conservation Commission and I don't work for Wyndham Regional. I'm just here as a Rockingham citizen. And I'm just really excited about this possibility. We love coming to you, especially after hearing the previous reports that, love coming to you with something that, suggestion of something that you don't have to do a lot of work on and it doesn't cost anything for the town. But it feels important to me and I'm going to talk just for a minute and I know it's getting late, but having lived in the house right above the gorge there and on the Williams River, it just is a spectacular part of the world. And we're so lucky to have it here locally. You know, everything from watching ravens feed babies in their, in the nest on the cliffs of the gorge. Or waking up in the middle of the night to hear the ice going out over the dam. You know, there's just a lot going on there. And it was in 2015 that Peter Bergstrom got the idea that we needed to get, to give names to the unnamed waterways in town. And so as an abutting landowner to the waterfall there, he contacted us and because we lived there. And the suggestion was, well, of course the falls might as well just get named Brockways Mills Falls because we have Brockways Mills Village and Brockways Mills Mill and Brockways Mills Gorge. And, you know, and I just sort of thought to myself, well, that's a lot of things named Brockways Mills. What about a name for, you know, that has something to do with the indigenous people? And in my mind, you know, that once lived here and are long gone. So I came to the select board meeting in sometime in 2015 and the select board at that point said, great idea for it to have a native name. Steve, go find a name for us. And I naively thought that, you know, well, native people, you know, that's something from the past and native folks don't live around here anymore. Well, I'm glad to know that I was naive and wrong and there are native folks. And my searching around and asking questions and meeting people eventually led me to Chief Roger Longto, who lives in Jamaica, but has family members living right here in Bellas Falls. And Roger got together with other Abnaki chiefs in New Hampshire and Vermont and just together they decided that an appropriate name would be Sakoki Falls. Sakoki being the band of Abnaki that have lived in this part of the world for millennium. And, and so the select board approved that and that suggestion and we applied to the State Library Board and extensive meetings and it was approved and then ultimately approved by the federal government. So Sakoki Falls is the name of the waterfall there just below, you know, begins at the dam by the bridge at Brockways Mills and continues down as it turns the corner into the and, uh, continues down as it turns the corner into the gorge. So that's, that's partly why I'm so excited. All of those reasons, cultural and historic and just absolutely beautiful nature there. And, um, and the other sites are equally deserving for sure. And, um, so I guess just want to see if you folks have any questions for us. Put the clap, let's try and answer them, Susan.
Yeah, well, my question, um, is about what's already existing there. You mentioned that they, they, they don't change.
Don't change what's there.
Herick's Cove, obviously we have to deal with the dam. So they're in part of this discussion as well. And then the, the owner of the, of the small power dam, Sokoki Falls area. They're all involved in these discussions as well.
Well, we'll be.
We'll be.
As Laurel mentioned, we came here first. And so the idea is to go now, if, you know, there's like, yeah, there's momentum, let's move it forward to approach other pressures and, um, also talk with, you know, many of the, you know, major landowners that would have questions. But again, it's an anti-degradation law. So it's not saying you can't have a dam.
Right.
Right? It's like, and like the canal, right, is a historic structure. So it's saying, well, you know, if you wanted to remove the day or the canal, that might be a problem.
Right, like we know there's construction, you know, in schedule that's going to affect the canal. You know, that would have to be taken into account, obviously.
Hey.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea.
I just want to, um, you know, I like that they worded as exceptional, natural, cultural, recreational and scenic values. You know, the fact that there is overlaps between natural and man-made resources. Uh, cause I always, I always say that natural and man-made resources are not separate. They are intertwined and one in the same. Uh, and it's just very helpful if you think of them that way instead of separating them out into little boxes.
Okay. I mean, question, the level of protection. So if someone decides they want to, they want to build a mansion next to the falls. Is that our local zoning would say, okay, you passed all those. Would, would this provide us another layer of protection saying this violates the protected waters?
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it would, it would certainly have sort of a voice in say the Act two fifty permit process or it's not ever probably going to say, no, you can't do X. It's probably going to say you can't do X unless you do this to protect the waters. So you can't put a sewage treatment plant right on the banks of the river. You're just going to put the effluent into the water there, that kind of thing. I will say that, um, so far, none of the sites in Vermont that have been under the ORW designation has ever had a challenge. Like there's never been a, you know, ruling saying they can't go forward. Something they can't, but it just kind of gives an extra level of eyes.
Okay, you want to say this one?
Yes, so I guess it would be useful just to say, yes, the Conservation Commission is going to be supported by the select board to move forward. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah. Do we need a motion?
Yeah, just consensus.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Come in.
And we'll keep you updated as we all go through that process.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Bonnie's feature. Um, there was a, I believe.
Yeah, I, I don't want to spend too much time on this, although, um, uh, I have gotten several emails and I think, uh, others on the board have as well. Some people concerned about this, so, um, I want the general public to know the reasons for, for my conclusions. Okay, so a couple of months ago, um, Daniel Ho was brought a petition to the select board to, um, requesting that the swap shop be reopened. And, uh, there was some discussion. There was a general, uh, a lot said about, uh, the negatives involved with that, the hassles, the cost and so forth. I volunteered to work with Daniel and hopefully a small task force to discuss and look into some research how we can have one in Rockingham at our transfer station. Uh, one that was run better and more effective and cleaner and organized all around, uh, major improvement over what we had there before. Uh, so, um, I spent with Daniel on the side. I said that get together two or three other people and let's make some trips to Browderboro, uh, Springfield, Springfield and Walthall where they have good swap shops. And he said, give me some time to put together a task force. And, um, there, there never was a task force. So I went myself to Browderboro, Springfield and Walthall. And I learned a good bit. Just to let people know, uh, each of these, uh, shops operates a little bit differently. In Browderboro, it's only a warm weather shop. The building therein isn't heated. So they close down in November and reopen in late April. And, um, in Browderboro, the town allows them to use a building on the premises. Town has nothing else to do with the swap shop. It is run completely by volunteers. They're only open on Saturday afternoons or Saturday mornings. I think it's twelve to twelve to one or something. And two Saturdays out of the month, they accept donations. And two Saturdays out of the month, you can go and get things. On donation days, you cannot even go inside. You can only donate. And on pickup days, no donations are accepted. They're very careful about what they receive. On donation days, they usually have six volunteers checking what's brought in. So I was there, uh, most hundred days. And the transfer station in Browderboro is maybe, I don't know, ten, twenty times bigger than ours. It's huge. And there's lots and lots of room, several buildings. They have their own entrance into the station and their own long drive. So cars line up to donate and these volunteers meet them and they just drive off. So that's how that operates. Walthall, now bear in mind, Walthall's a fairly wealthy town and it's in a different state. Um, they have a transfer station that's probably three times the size of ours. Very, very, very well equipped. And they have a little auxiliary building
Sorry.
uh, next to it that's designated for the swap shop. There's a window cut between the, the trash people and the, and the shop. Town employees handle donations. So, I mean, I've made several donations over there myself. And you have to take it to someone, they say, what is it? What's it worth? If it isn't immediately, they look it over. And if they say, okay, we'll keep it. They have a place where they put it and the people that volunteer in the shop can pick it up and put it in the shop. And they are open all year round because that shop is heated. In Springfield, this one woman who is very saintly, I would say, uh, if you know her.
I do know how she is.
She, she is, uh, some Christian, uh, I would say. She does it all herself. She's been doing it for twenty-four years. And again, the town isn't directly involved at all. They just give her a little building to work out of. She oversees everything that comes in. Uh, the building isn't heated, but she's there all year round. So it was interesting to see how these other places work. And to come back to our transfer station, I spent several hours on two different occasions, watching the ebb and flow and exactly how things work down there. And talking to the guys and getting a grand tour and, and everything explained, which was interesting. I hadn't really understood all of it before then. Uh, it changes quite a bit. I mean, it's sort of like the restaurant business that I used to work in when I was younger. You can go in there at one minute and everybody's sitting around doing nothing. Twenty minutes later, whoa, the whole house broken loose and everybody's losing their mind. It's kind of like that down there. Sometimes people say, I go down there, nobody's, the people are sitting around. Well, an hour later, they're probably not. Somebody's just pulled up with a refrigerator and whatever. Um, my conclusion is that we don't have enough room to do this. All the other shops were either separate from the main purpose of the transfer station or in a, in a building that was separate, they all have their own entrances. Whoever's running the shop can handle the traffic flow coming in there. There's no other reason for people to come in there. What we have is one big building with open bays on the front and the back. It's metal, it's not heated. It floods during heavy rains on the western side. There's no way, and the problem with our other shop was that there was no way to keep any tabs on what was coming in. Too many people going in and out for, not just to get in there, but to have other business in the building. And leaving all kinds of terrible stuff. I don't, and we don't have the parking. In each of these other instances, there's plenty of parking so people can do what they need to do with their trash and recycling, park over here and poke around in the swap shop. We don't have that. It may look to you, if you go down there, we're going slow times, there's plenty of room. Excuse me, but there really isn't. Because if there are seven refrigerators over here, Christmas trees piled up over here, somebody's got construction debris they're trying to unload over here. There isn't a lot of room. There isn't room for cars to park and people to really spend time poking around in the shop. Not without messing up the traffic flow. And I'm very proud of the way they have it working down there now. It really is, it functions very, very well. Everything's organized, it's clean. You can go through there even on a really busy day. Used to be sometimes the cars would be backed up so bad, you couldn't even get in. People would be going down the shoulder of the road. And we have to do a lot more than we used to have to do. Uh, and the state is constantly mandating what you have to recycle and how you have to go about it. So that's changed over the years. So I mean, a list of what we recycle, not that much really goes to landfill down there. Your household waste, yes. And the construction debris, yes. But we recycle metals in the, what they call the metal bin. Um, we've got single stream for plastics and glass and paper, household waste. And then in the main building, and then we have tires and urine we collect, food scraps we collect. And in the main building, they take care of batteries, light bulbs, electronics. So that's a lot. There's not that much that we're actually collecting that's really going straight to landfill. And the old shop, sure, stuff came and went, you know, I mean, I, I remember taking a vase or something once, a couple of little things. And I took some things there once. But it had to be cleared out every so often. I'm not sure how often, you might know, Peter, how often.
Well, when I went down there and I spent three or four years down there, both on Wednesday and Saturday. And we'd get stuff in and we had, at that point, we had kids that were doing community service in the high school. And that kid would spend all day looking at junk that was left in there. I would control the dumpster, which attacked very safely. And the daydream.
So that's, that's the point. The shop that we had, I don't think, I don't think it did much to address the problem of too much going to the landfill. Because of the way it was run, because of what was allowed to come in there. It wasn't accomplishing that. It wasn't really addressing that concern. I think we should have a swap shop here somewhere. But I don't think we have room to do it right at our transfer station on Route five in Westminster. I'm sorry if people are disappointed with that.
Okay, questions?
Just thank Bonnie for undertaking, that was a thankless task. And you know, you took a lot of grief and I was one of the people who was, you know, really pulling for it. You, you could investigate it thoroughly and it's like me, a saint and a location.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, at one point I was, I was considering, cause move more, more land. But then Scott sent me the, uh, the maps with the, with the elevations and you're just, you can't, you can't have any more land to what, what we've got down there.
There's also contaminated sites, you really can't expand what you've got already. It's limited to use the open land that you've got now, which is just, uh, it's one point five five acres. That's all you got up there.
And it's wet, so you can't.
And this, well, it's all downhill and stuff and all dump debris and everything. And you tell what you're sitting on right now. So, and there's mounds of stuff there. We used to shoot rats down there when we were kids. And it's, it's, it's interesting.
Steve has a question.
Yeah, um, Bonnie, in the three places that you visited, do you have a sense if they had things that ultimately they realized weren't going to get given away? Did those just get added to the town's waste stream without compensation?
The, the saintly woman in Springfield.
Right.
I think that piece of work, I'd say.
She really is. She really is a very, very sincere and devoted woman. She said, uh, she had a, a little quarrel with one of the Springfield select people. Who said something, they saw her loading up a big trash bag to take over to trash.
Right.
And they said, huh, you know, something like that. And she said, yeah, every now and then I do, you know? But she has a little cute little donation box there. And she said, I always, always get at least five dollars, ten, sometimes thirty, and I give it to the town. So she said, that pays for that. And, um, in Browderboro, they said, this is hard for me to imagine, but they said, most of the time, when they have their pickup days, everything is gone.
Right.
At the end of the day. But they're very careful about what they taste. I watched them send so many people away. You know, people come up with carloads and they get stand there and go through everything that's in their trunk. So no, 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 no. And same thing in, in Walthall. Uh, they're very, very careful and, um, uh, like for contrast, uh, Andrea, uh, had probably thirty coffee makers.
Right.
Right? And Walthall, they had three. And they said, and so that's why we're not taking anymore. So that they're, they, they not only look at the quality of what they've got, they look at what they have on hand. None, no more of that, you know? So it's interesting, but the key to it are volunteers that are going to really be consistent about what they accept. And a decent place, a decent location and, and parking. Parking is an issue for us with the limited space that we have. So, so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think when I went to Walthall, I talked to the woman that ran that. Their swap shop is completely volunteer. They have a list of dedicated people. They, they have a list and if you don't show up, you call somebody else to cover for you. That has never happened around here, I can tell you.
Yeah, they have a whole scud.
What they do there is like, she said, you bring it into the trash facility first. They weigh it and if it goes to the swap shop, they don't want it. Pay for it, because it's not, be that and take it home. They don't.
Right, right, yeah, I've got, they weigh everything, they weigh everything.
But they have, if you believe the operation, they got, they got a lot of money involved, invested over there.
Yeah, they've got floor flaps and everything. It's a, it's a beautiful transfer station.
They get a good trash.
Good trash.
The only thing that's missed down here and, and probably Walthall too is the books.
Yeah.
The books, because people use that for second library, kitchen. You can have to. The books, because people use that for second library. But you, you can have to worry about getting back on time, you didn't get it, pay it fine. You're just down here. You know, they transferred around, but then again, the library, we had nobody volunteering, they ended up on the floor. And nobody's gonna grocery box the books. I mean, you know, they, they're up there and sorted out.
So anyway, that, that's my report. And if people are disappointed, I, I'm, I'm sorry. I just tried to be as candid about it and, and as unbiased and that's my conclusion.
Thanks for your work.
Yeah, thank you, Bonnie. And thank you, Peter, too.
I've already sent my congratulations to Bonnie on the email. But that's her, that report was welcome.
You have to remind people, if you have quality stuff to give away, there are other places that you can donate your goods to that are resold at thrift shops.
And the availability of, you know, Facebook and all those things, too awesome. I, I, I go on Zapp, River and Bales Falls, a lot of times there's somebody saying, anybody know, wants a, wants this, or can anybody use this? So I mean, there's other options out there than just a swap shop.
Yeah, well, also Waffle, anybody can go to Waffle, anybody can go to Springfield too.
And, um. Not anymore. You have to have a sticker.
You have to have a sticker, but if you're only gonna use the swap shop, you don't have to. They never use a check sticker until I get there.
Yeah, I, I.
It's been a while, a week, they started checking stickers.
I mean, it, it's, it's easy to donate at Waffle, it really is. I mean, I had a good friend die a few weeks ago. And I had to empty out his apartment. So, um, I made several trips over there with, with nice things, that they were happy to get, you know.
Okay, we all saw the swap shop. All right, that being said, let's move on to item six, which is approved submission for TA grant, transportation alternative grant for a trail extension. There's information in your packet. And there's a motion on the front page, and Gary's here to address and take questions.
We, we, we did. We went through it at an earlier meeting, so it's not the first time you've seen it. And, um, basically, it's a, uh, a scoping application, and so it would operate the same way that, that the one we're doing at the School Street Extension in Atkinson Street where we, we engage a municipal project manager, likely Wyndham Regional Commission, and the grant pays for that, some of the grant funds. And, uh, and they would identify the best alignment for the trail and, uh, look for methods to make it, you know, fully accessible. So being in the designated downtown and, you know, walkable to Alabel's Falls, they would identify a way to make ADA accessible, like ideally, if, if it's possible. Seems like it is.
Okay, any questions for Gary or another question I have as usual, where's the money coming from? Ten thousand you're looking for?
We have some additional money to remember.
Okay, I always ask the question.
And we do have money.
I'm the money guy, you know, I watch that.
So we do have some funds available.
Okay, that's all we.
The Walk Bike Committee supports this application. We're working hard to provide public process, which is one of the criteria for their grant. We're having a, I mentioned that last time. We're having a forum in January for all involved bike and bed people. This would be such a benefit for our town if we came through. And we've got this beautiful waterfront. Nineteenth century towns turned their backs on the waterfront, most towns did. Now people go around the country, people are developing their, their waterfloods as beautiful and peaceful places. So we're pretty excited about this.
Or they just wish they had water.
Yeah, exactly.
Our outstanding water resources application, there's some real, you know, advantage to having water.
Yeah, it's a good.
Okay, there is a motion on the front page. If anyone wants to read that, we'll get this operationalized.
All right, I move to authorize the municipal manager to execute application and documents and a support letter from the governing body of the applicant municipality with acknowledgement and source of a local match of ten thousand dollars for transportation alternative grant scoping studies for trail expansion of the Bellas Falls historic riverfront park and trail system. Sound through the remit.
Just a second.
In seconded, any further discussion? Do we know? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hey, we're new twenty twenty-four general fund budget.
Okay, so I think we still have Alyssa on her.
Alyssa, you still on this?
Unless she's engrossed in Dancing with the Stars or something and it's completely blown us off by now. No, she's here.
Oh, there you go. Sorry to wake you up.
So thank you for your patience, Alyssa.
Yeah.
Well, this is, like I said, this is a first cut. We will have at your next meeting, a pretty in-depth follow-up with highway, capital, ADA, ARPA money, and our debt schedule. Cause I know that's come up with various conversations we had. So this is really, you know, we're not gonna touch on that at this point. I did hand out something to you just because if you look on the first page under CLG grants, we did not put a dollar amount in there in our proposed twenty-four. And I did hand out some information that came from the Historic Preservation Commission from last night. They just went through and at least for, for their recommendation on the budget for twenty-four, put some numbers together. Obviously, the board has to look at this in a much more tense detail and, and looking at the reserve fund question, but the CLG portion, we will plug in. So that number will, will be added, and that is a reimbursement. You know, the CLG does get a reimbursement for that. So just so that you're aware, right now, you'll see that number as a zero. If you look about halfway down the page, and that will be plugged in. Bigger issue obviously going forward is from our Historic Structures Report presentation tonight, is we obviously have significant financial challenges to bring the meeting house up to at least a rehabilitation standard, I think, is what Alyssa kept calling it, as opposed to a full preservation standard. So we're looking at how we can get there. And if there is a Save America's Treasures grant, as Walter had pointed out, there is a, a option, or there is a requirement, not an option, for a match. And so how we would match that, and he has, for example, put a three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number in their proposal. As part of our discussions as we go forward with potentially looking at ARPA, or possibly even an article, if it's something that the board would be interested in pursuing. As we get into that discussion on the twenty.
Does that have to be town funds or other sources of funding can be the match for that grant?
There could be a mix of in-kind funding, there could be private donations, there could be town funds. We cannot use federal dollars. So if, for example, we have some chunk of money coming to the CLG brand that we could not give you that as a part of that.
Or the ARPA funding.
Well, the ARPA.
And that's separate though.
Don't forget, we definitely adopted the resolution, so we sort of pushed those funds into our general fund as part of that now. I think the allocation that we expended is different.
The Select Board will have more of a voice in that, if they think they're part of the general fund, yes?
The way that we did that, we did the replacement funds for COVID, if you remember.
Yeah.
So we have, we have more flexibility now in how we can fly this one.
You, you, you may, um, but three hundred and twenty-five thousand, there's a placeholder that's essentially based on conversations suing that they're, uh, you're pulling together some ARPA funds, some former ARPA funds, if you will, as well as funding from, uh, town articles over a two-year period, not within. Cause the way that the cycle goes with the Save America treasures, even if we were to apply with the current cycle, we would not be seeing that money until next fall. And we'd have, and we'd have up to two years to spend the money. So we could accumulate funding in the reserve. That's the sum, that's, that's one underlying. It's not gonna be all that, it, it, yeah, just one fell swoop.
So there are some, like I said, there are some numbers that we'll have to plug in under, under that first page. I'll just, we'll just jump through it real quick and then I can go back and have more substantial conversations to lecture those questions. And also I can have Alyssa jump in as well. Solid Western Recycling, if you've noticed, we have increased our, our budgeted figures. We have been consistently over our cost estimates. I guess it's a good news, bad news proposition. Now we're busier, we're taking in more materials, but the cost of disposal for all those materials is increasing. And so you'll see that that's, uh, we're still not running a profit. We've closed our gap, but we have not been able to at least run a break even. And at this point, I'm not anticipating based on our numbers from twenty-four that we, we're running at a break even for twenty-four either. So. Theater, if you look at the third page, a lot of the theater is again pushing, and Charlie had presented to you as part of the red update that we are looking at adding more live production and shows that gives us a greater return on the theater. Theater Houston, right now, we're experiencing for movies. Movies are really in a sort of a strange position right now. You can see it nationally, and we're no different. You know, the people have not really returned to theaters in their numbers. I think they anticipated in the streaming and other competition. How, first one, movie theater works is going to be an interesting conversation as we go forward. So we'll see that we definitely have some challenges as we try to maintain, uh, which is a very important, uh, community asset that we want to continue, uh, to provide. Not a lot of other changes. I think the one thing is we went forward through just general town operations. Any of the, really the, the built-in increases are mostly related to inflationary pressure on, on just our operating expenses. There are no real reprogramments, uh, that we have proposed, and there are no additional staff that we have proposed in the budget at this point. There are some things that we have kept in, in, in the budget that we will really, at this point, we're not sure of. We'll have to see as we go forward, um, how we do with our fuel costs, as we've all experienced, you know, a pretty significant increase in heating oil. And now it seems like that market is, is more volatile than ever. It's, it's going up and down. So we did forecast it, um, to the best of our ability, but again, it's, it's really sort of, you know, we're the at the vagaries of the market, how that's gonna go as we go forward. So those are the big things. Employee benefits, a couple of things on there. There's just more information that, that are impacted. We had discussed that premiums had increased on the base premiums across the board on all the offerings with Blue Cross. That was a state of Vermont decision. We did, we're in the middle of our open enrollment period for the enhanced benefits that we had discussed and that you had approved at the previous fourth tri board meeting. Uh, so we'll see how those numbers ultimately shake out. We had slight increase in our Beamers, uh, contribution. That was again, a state mandate. That's something that, uh, that we had built into those numbers as well. So, you know, you shouldn't see a significant change. This is our last year for our service agency requests and the current funding levels for those. And I had sent Peter, uh, some things that another community has done where they go through an evaluation process in terms of how they evaluate various requests for, uh, funding. So it's something that I think Peter's interested in. You know, we are at that five-year renewal for next year. And how we wanna start a process to engage members of the board and others to try to evaluate those and ask the agencies as well as new, uh, potentially new agencies to participate. It's probably gonna take up a good chunk of your time next year.
It was an interesting, uh, information you sent out. That was something similar to what we tried to do several years ago.
You had mentioned that, so that's why I pulled that out.
We punched this down. At one point, this whole service agency was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, believe it or not. Finally, set up a committee to screen all the apps, and we asked them to provide all this information, who they serve, all this and, or any other towns that they serve contributing. And there was a little tension at points on some of these articles, but, uh, we did, we were able to knock it down to seventy thousand dollars, believe it or not. And now it's starting to creep right back up because every time you turn around, there's another person knocking on the door or increasing, you know, looking for increased items. Some of these are, do get sold, do the same type of thing. So I think if we were to set up a screening committee for, not this year, because this year, we vote on the whole bunch, but next year, where each one gets voted separately, twenty-three, twenty-four, that's where we should need to set up a committee to screen these. And they, I really, it, it makes a difference because you could really sort out the ones that aren't. But we, we just got another one from Brownboro, believe it or not, looking for a handout. So. Yeah, a couple of neighbors. Many hacks in the community, they just turn the money over, you know? No, they don't ask the tough questions.
I, I wanna, uh, see if Danny Storey puts this.
See, here's another one.
Here's another one.
I already donated the one from Brownboro. Cut it out.
Could give.
It is the season of giving.
Couple thousand dollars to help us maintain the riverfront park.
That's been a, a constant source of, um, stress on the historical society. And I did not budget any money in here, but it's it's an item I know that causes a tremendous amount of volunteer burnout trying to maintain.
It, it costs, it costs money.
And it costs money.
To keep it going.
Nothing's free, no matter what they take. Nothing's free. Somewhere on the world, there's somebody coming, talking to our team.
Yeah. Uh, we, we don't really have any income, you know? You know, donations.
But these groups also provide a service to our community, so you have to balance that out.
Well, that's true.
No, I'm not saying, no, but so the park is a service to the community up there. To everyone in the community.
So do we need to, to put a date on when we're gonna establish this committee here?
I would do it, you know, sometime after a town meeting and, and set up, and then get them out so they start processing their, gotta start processing eliminated. I think that was in August they started.
Yeah, they started in August.
In August, that, that's town of Weathersfield. And it's a very detailed process they go through. And if you don't submit that date, too bad, you're out of luck. You don't get, don't get any money. So, I mean, it's a hard stance to take, but you know, you gotta start looking at the taxpayers' pockets, especially with the economy that we're in right now. It's gonna be our tough job this year. And next year probably following, so.
So is it, is it too late now to get something in for a question for next year?
No, you have to put a petition in. As a new organization, you have to put a petition.
And that gets over to town meeting, whether they want to fund it or not.
Okay, but you don't get stuck into that bundle, is that?
No.
That's a five-year process of, you know, that's complete review is every five years. But yeah, you can do individual requests. Uh, I want to point out to you again, the ambulance contract, we were still working on looking at alternatives. We kept it at a level funding. I don't think we're gonna stay at level funding, but I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention that right now, that's the placeholder we have on there.
Scott, will the competition possibly bring that number down?
No, no. Sad part is, competition's actually gonna increase that number.
Whoa, how's that work?
Because it's a quality versus.
Quality of service if you go work.
But I'm not, at this point, we still, I'm hoping that we can have a meeting next week and, and the fire department folks can look through, you know, all the first responder folks can look through our options, and then we'll come back to the board on the twenty.
Was the issue with the temporary use of the Bellas Falls fire department that had resolved that came up at the tri board meeting?
Yeah, it's resolved.
Good.
Yeah. So anyway, so that's just, that's just again, uh.
We were slammed, or our board got slammed on it from, from first call, saying they didn't, we didn't tell anything to them.
There's a whole host of items on, uh, under capital projects that we're gonna go through the next time, so I don't wanna jump into that in great detail. Some good deal with stuff in the current year budget. Some of the deals and stuff that we're gonna have to talk about with the roof and some other projects. Obviously, in the reserves, you can see that there's some issues. Gravel pit is, is a conversation we'll have as well. We're at a point now. We're at a point now where we have to start, and we're going to look at doing an RFP for. Trying to mine some of the area that then will have to be the closure on. And that's sort of the period that he sets a budding, Bucky Adams has bought the garage property there, the Savages Garage, and there's some mining already going on there. But that's not us, that's a private activity. But we'll have to do some on ours because we'll be, at a certain point, we're going to start, I don't remember where we are in our final closure, but we're getting close. So we'll mine our material, we'll have to do some reclamation and loming of some of our other lands. And in the spring, GMP is supposed to be coming in and some of the areas that we're going to mine, and then they'll be putting in. The transmission lines, which will then go out and connect to the solar. So, that's happening in spring.
Is income from the solar rate, does it appear anywhere here?
We did not put the income in until we know for sure that. They're going to do the utility work as well as when the, that, that triggers his responsibility to us for the fifty thousand. We do not include it in our budget estimates at this point. We'll have a whole update on our. Our bonding and our, and our debt schedule. As we talked about sort of a debt diet, one of the things the fire equipment committee we've talked about is we don't want to take on additional debt. For, for vehicles. And as you can see, you're still paying off previous vehicle acquisitions. So those, we're trying to basically. Get those off the books before we get into any larger scale. Acquisition, so that's part of what we talked about retro fitting and potentially looking at our. Equipment next to see, are we overstaffed? Over. What the word is, I guess we've got too much equipment, not enough manpower.
And Scott questioned that, if, if the report that this consultant's going to provide for us on the fire department. If it suggests some ways of sharing equipment or merging two departments or whatever, that would affect very much the, the, the. Debt planning, wouldn't it, because we won't.
Yeah, because if you saw that replacement schedule that we had looked at in our joint meeting, it's a substantial amount of money.
Scary.
It's in the millions. And, you know, again, we're sort of previewing our next meeting, which is a lot of big, big topics, but obviously the board wants to. You'll have to bond for some of our expenses on the bridge projects. So that really starts in earnest probably by twenty six or twenty seven, because I think, you know, based on the schedule that they gave us. You know, they'll be into construction and ultimately, you know, taking out the old bridge by twenty seven. We still have not heard on the bridge street bridge, we did ask to be included in the regional. Program for replacement for that, so I'm hopeful that you're something. If we were qualifying to get that bridge done and then, we've already talked about, all right, listen, how that sort of jumps right back into the schedule. Starting in like twenty seven, twenty eight, so.
So where do we stand on the post your bridge? Do we have any, let me even rate.
They want to come back and have a conversation with you, trying to figure out when we want to do it. To talk about galvanizing versus painting, and there's a host of different colors. And then the potential for what the cost would be in the future if you decide to paint.
Then the bike ped committee, the rock bike committee also sent some recommendations made by. Jonathan Weber from Local Motion, he's a, he's a volunteer in our committee. In terms of the, for example, expanding the, the bike ped, it's only eight feet wide now. And he thinks, and we sent his suggestions to the V trans folks, we and Scott. That should be wider. And some other things, some other suggestions, not that we'll add a lot of money, maybe it should be wider, but. But they, that, that one up, and I got a note back from that shape, you know, from the woman who's heading the, the, the. Project, like the canal street. I've got a deep on street, they said they're going to incorporate, they're going to review some suggestions that were made by this guy and get back to us. Pat, presumably at this meeting, Scott, that you're talking about.
Yeah, I only had very preliminary conversations with the engineers and we have to do a little bit more work to sort of put together a more in-depth. Presentation, I don't know if we'll make it for the meeting of the twentieth, we might have to push it into the first meeting in January. Just because I think the meeting of the twentieth is going to be pretty comprehensive with all of our budgets. So, I think that one's going to require probably its own meeting early in January.
And what about this bridge reserve line?
Yeah, just going there, thank you, because we haven't put anything in there, that's why I asked about. We should be putting money in, because that's when that, when that comes up, we'd like to have a little thing in our pocket to help to pay some of the expenses.
Oh, we used it.
We used some of it.
We've done that for a while, that's why. Thought we had fifty thousand we were setting in there.
I thought we did last.
And I think Alyssa, we talked about this, right, there was forty thousand and then some of that was spent. And then, I don't know.
And those were spent, because you can just look at the expenditure line, there's charges to the T post your bridge in there.
Right. So, last year you took a hundred thousand from fund balance to offset your tax rate. So far, just looking at our first cut of the general fund, if you look at the, the bottom line numbers, we're still. A little below where we were last year. We, we do still have some modifications to make, like I said, with the CLG and a few other items. To add to this and then obviously the discussions on highway and capital will impact that as well. Alyssa, I think you wanted to jump in before the board sort of jumps in.
Nope, I'm just gonna try and look up the bridge reserve while they're talking.
Okay.
Questions?
Absolutely, that was just a highlight, it was not meant to be a comprehensive.
Uh, on the second page, I guess, the one thing I request, can we get these pages numbered? A little easier if we say go to page such and such, right now, we don't know where we are, other than mentioning something, but on the, after the second page, Jim, there's. Get out of the manager, yes, you and I talked about this, Scott, you've been around. Second decision to manager, there's an increase there, what's the plan there? On control six, about twelve thousand and twenty.
Part of that is we've been splitting a position with. And offsetting some of that time with grant revenue, so we've been using some of Betsy's time. So that's, some of that's an offset to her time and then we've also been using it, some of it when we get grants. There's administrative offsets, which we then use to help pay some of that other time, if we keep track of the grants. And so really that's what that is supposed to be there for.
Scott and I have been running around by having a full time. Executive assistant.
We talked about that earlier, didn't we?
You know, we used to have one, and that took care of all the minutes and gets posted and agendas getting out in time. Olive ordinances and stuff being updated, I know there's a book that you guys have enjoyed going through, Sue's got one, I've got one. It's about three inch stick folder, there's one in the office, but it's all ordinances and. Updates and tells who's elected to what and how long they're in there and all this, that's all updated by the executive assistant. So, you know, if we had someone full time or a three quarter time, I don't know. That might alleviate the logjam down there, I don't know who the rest of you guys are about that, but.
I, I think we should.
I think about Scott's productivity, because.
Well, that was the point, I was, I know at one time you said, well, I'm doing this, I'm doing that, I'd say, yeah, but if we had something else, they would take that off of that load. You know.
If some concern about your stress level, work level, whatever.
Doesn't he look like he's stressed, come on?
And we know you're a performer, Scott, we've got you on the stage, but, but seriously, would it help your productivity to have someone like that or not?
It, it would help, for sure, I mean, like anybody, right, we're, we're juggling multiple balls and even tonight, right, everything we talked about. All of these items require follow ups and, you know, cannabis control resolutions to the stadium.
Would that person attend our meetings perhaps and help take notes and then, or not?
It's possible, you know.
Depends on the job distraction we come up with, I mean, others would probably call it some pretty good job description.
I mean, challenges.
Run through the meeting recording too.
And there's a thousand and more details, right, of things that we talk about here that require follow up, silly things like putting posting signs on gates at the. That, you know, I'll leave myself a note, but it's in a pile.
Right.
At some point, we'll, you know, I checked with Andy and it'll get posted. So, it's things like that where somebody would be able to really.
Yeah, I mean, when we, when we had Carrie here, I mean, she was sort of the first line of creating that list, she managed that. You know, so it, it did take a huge workload off.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have, you're starting to insist on this?
We should add it to the budget, we just did not, we wanted to have a conversation, Peter, you know, has talked about it, so.
What, what do you think, Peter?
What do I think?
Do we add it to the budget, make a?
I think we should, I've, I've been. Yeah, for years up before that, and it.
When was the last time that we had? Full time managers.
Carrie was here. And then we went through a series of people who didn't work out, because it's, it's not an easy position. And, I mean, maybe a three quarters, something where it's, you know, the part of the problem is. It's not necessarily a highly paid position either, so I bet that you do have good benefits. But it could be someone who has, you know, a, a family that's, it could be worked around a school schedule, for instance, so.
Well, viable candidates, good viable candidates, Scott, but I don't know, I just, you did. A lot of them are, because of previous issues with the other administration, they're, they're, they're turned once, shy twice, you know. And it's trying to, even if you tell them Scott's a good man, they're saying, yeah, yeah, I've never heard that before, you know. So, you know, we tried to percent, and I don't know what happened, but.
Well, you know, if we, if we describe the position as flexible hours. And let someone work during school hours, but also attend our meetings.
That would be good.
Yeah, that, you know, the trustee meetings, the snack board meetings, joint board meetings.
Well, that's always been part of the problem though, because if you're working a full day and then your meet, your, your day gets extended to. Nine o'clock, with the Zoom now, with, I mean, you don't necessarily have to be here.
You're right, but I meant by Zoom or whatever, but also I meant like the, the job would, would end like at three P M. So you would just, just work on a shortened work day, but.
We'll look at something and I'll, I'll, we'll update that, so.
To make it so that someone with kids in school.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something the manager could, I mean, it all depends on the person, but I think we need to put money in the budget line for that, I think we really need to put, I've been.
You know, the, the B date here, we can always slice something that we have, I mean, at that point, we. You know, we're going to be, we're, we're going to prepare a few things, I'm sure.
Because there's big stuff coming in the highway discussion, you know, you know, obviously the paving, it's a big conversation we have to have. And there's all options that we'll look at in the capital, and, and like you said, if we want to start building reserves. Reserves for the roof on this building, that's one of the things we have to talk about, you know, we have some pricing. Beyond the stuff we've already talked about, which is the reinforcement of the trusses and. And, and getting the theatrical system up and running, so.
To raise the other issue that we've been discussing and getting emails about is. A service contract with Wyndham County Sheriff's, and I don't know whether we just put in, I mean, I just. Of course Alyssa would have to figure out how to. How to manage this, but, I mean, as we already know, Rock, Bell's Falls residents will not be happy having that in the complete Rock and End budget. We know that going forward, Saxon River already has a contract seventy five hundred a year, I believe, for three hours a week. I don't know whether, I mean, figuring out how to put it in, may, do you increase, say you ask contract out for ten hours a week? And then Saxon River no longer has their individual contract, but they have their three hours. I don't know, you know, book why, you know, for the budget wise, how you would manage that, and how, how would you pull out? What Rock, uh, Bell's Falls residents will not want to pay. Towards that, I mean, it's, I remember looking, according to what they sent us, I don't know if I can find it now. But like ten hours a week, I think turned into about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars a year, if I remember right, something like that.
It's in that neighborhood, it's going to be fifteen to eighteen thousand.
Something, something like that.
At the sixty two dollar an hour figure.
Right.
Which is what the sheriff's contract.
But then there's the question of, well, they only have five people, and if you add on another, that's, that's somebody's. You know, that's a, that's a quarter of a person, and they're already stretched thin.
Also Westminster's considering firing you, so we better check on what kind of.
Yes, Scott and I, we've talked, talked about that, but I, I did get an email, I, I stuck my neck out and asked Sarah if you could. Come up with some numbers, what they were thinking of. But her reply was about four hours a week.
Which I think is overkill, honestly.
So, if you figure that, four hours a week times four weeks is sixteen hours, times twelve is a hundred and. Ninety two hours, it's sixty two bucks, because you're going to have two thousand hours before you get there, so that amounts to about twelve thousand bucks.
And that's just for.
Just for burns though.
Yeah, which honestly, I mean, I live there and I hate the speeding, we do have problems. And a lot of the problems come down to. A few people, I mean, some of the more serious problems, a few people who live in the near vicinity. That the Wyndham County Sheriff's honestly would not be dealing with, it would be the state police. So.
And Peter's point about, what about Cambridge Court, what about the other parts, you know?
I think it has to be townwide, if we put it in the budget for say, that sixteen thousand, ten hours a week, that has to go townwide. And the thing is, you also can't, it has to be randomized too, because if you say, okay, they're going to be here every Tuesday from one to two. You're going to slow down from one to two, you're not, it's.
Well, I think you target certain days and certain activities, but you're right, it can't be every Tuesday at, at Bartonville Bridge, because that's silly. Right, that becomes self defeat.
So I think, going forward, I think that, though, on, on to my opinion, is that if. We're going to do the policing, there should be an article probably on the town warning. To see if people want it, then you can find out if the resident town wants to pay for it, fine, we're golden, go ahead.
That's a good way to handle it, put it out there to the town.
But if they, if the voters know, well then, what are you, what's the answer to the bank bill, I mean. As we've said, they could probably make their own district and.
That's not gonna. Because we can't afford it, I mean, sixteen thousand dollars with a, with a road with twenty people, twenty houses. And then you've got people who live out of state, who own land, who don't stay there, they're not going to be happy with that coming in on their taxes, not gonna happen.
I mean, and of course, the other situation you've got to have, if we do just Barnesville, then. Saxon River's going to come in knocking on the door saying, well, they're getting it, why aren't we getting, why aren't you paying for ours?
No, we can't, we can't turn that.
I think the only way it would work is if you include Saxon River in it. And you say, okay, you no longer have to come out of, out of this with your, in your separate budget, that those three hours gets incorporated. In the ten hours that's going townwide, then you still have the problem with Bell's Falls.
I mean, that's one thing that you, you may find, it's the same as the fire department, so it's going to be, we want control of what. They, we want them to do, not what you're going to tell them to do.
Well, no, you could do that in a contract, you could have, they, they wouldn't change their contract, it just wouldn't be, wouldn't be paid for separately in Saxon River taxes. It would be incorporated in, in the.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, that, that's a control factor.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know what I mean, they're going to say, we want to be able to tell the sheriff what to do, not just because everybody's paying for it, you know.
Wouldn't they report to Scott, though, and Scott would be the leader?
I would, you would think that would be.
That's been one of the biggest complaints in Westminster is when they do arrive in town, nobody has any idea where they were, when they were, that's why they were.
Yeah, no, it's.
And then they get a bill and they're, they're frustrated because.
The same as Scott, just saying in Westminster, they get a bill and, you're saying, what do you mean, we didn't see anybody in here, yeah? So.
Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's a challenge.
They don't have my personal go around, you know.
They only have five, I mean, how, how are they going to add another, another town, I mean. I, I don't know if there's. Any other, I mean, it would be great, but there's also people who live in Bartonville who don't want to leave presence of town. So, I mean, what are they going to do, sit on the side of the road and just wait for some of the speed by? So, I mean, what are they gonna do, sit on the side of the road and just wait for some of the speed by? And a lot of people are uncomfortable with seeing a police car just sitting there all the time. You want somebody, if you have an issue, if you see someone dealing drugs at the bridge, which we do, you want to have someone who can respond quickly. We don't have that in any case, even if we contract out to Wyndham County Sheriff. Because it depends where they are, and you can't predict, a lot of times that happens at night, they're probably doing it right now because it's dark, so. I don't know what the answer is, I'm just as frustrated as the rest of my residents and the rest of the people who walk the roads of Earl Rockingham and don't like to have people speeding by, and don't like people on their cell phone. I mean, I nearly got hit a couple of times already, um, just because someone squirms away because they're on their cell phone.
Yeah.
They don't see that I'm walking my dog on the side of the road.
Amazing, the law is out there, they're not supposed to be, what they're trying to do, but they make a right in town.
But I don't know whether we just put it in there as a placeholder, so that, okay, we've had this discussion, this is what it would cost, we don't know if we can manage it, we have to work out the issues with Bellas Falls and with Saxons River, there's a lot of things that have to be worked out.
Yeah.
I like Peter's idea of bringing it to the people, though, and then, and that way.
Like Susan said, throw in the sixteen thousand for, you know, whatever it is, and, for, you know, the thing, put it into the placeholder, and then, uh,
Yeah.
you know, we, we know that if, if it so happens that it goes down, we, we don't spend sixteen thousand for that, that we just have to go down the road further from there to see and get, get the response from Saxons River, what, what they think, I mean, I'm sure there's going to be people saying, that's a great idea, we want it paid for. They, they pay for it in the roundabout way.
Yeah.
They're still paying for it, sorry. Instead of adding in the village, but it's gonna be townwide.
Different, different.
We've given the emphasis that, well, we pay town taxes too, the story I was getting, when this, this situation comes up.
I mean, when it comes down to what sixteen thousand dollars is to someone whose house is valued at a hundred fifty thousand, it's not a lot of money for an individual person, but we're not, there's the problems of the service, and why pay that extra twenty bucks in your taxes if you're not getting the service and, and they're not. Or if you're, you're angering all of Bellas Falls who doesn't want to have to pay.
So what, what, what if we invite the sheriff, last time, remember, the sheriff couldn't be here?
It's not the sheriff, was he, wasn't he?
No.
No, it was a representative.
I know there was here, but it's not, then my representative was a lieutenant, I guess.
Right, so can we invite the sheriff here, it'd be good if we worked some of these questions through with the sheriff before we took this any further, right?
No, I don't think we're gonna get the answer, so.
Well, how many people do you have?
We've already said, they've already said in, in that letter that they had filed.
And also, why is Westminster unhappy?
The other thing is, is probably stick on a neck belt with a short rope and bring it up for the joint board meeting, where all three boards are there, and you're gonna get the argument of why Saxons River would probably jump on the ship, maybe they wouldn't, and then you get Bellas Falls opposition to paying the debt, so that would give you some interest going into town meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if there's any way. Well, say, this is an Alyssa question.
I know.
Say, if we did, if we did put the money in the budget, is there any way then we could put it, okay, so this is many taxpayers in the town of, of the village of Bellas Falls, we credit their budget, the five thousand dollars or whatever it is, so that then they, they're not paying for it in their taxes.
Right, because they're basically three fifths, three thousand or fifty-two hundred is what, right?
Is it three fifths? I don't know.
I think it's three thousand people in Bellas Falls and fifty-two hundred.
Well, there's people that are taxpayers.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know what is for taxpayers, but that's a night, I imagine it's a nightmare.
That would be a question for Nemec, for sure.
But it could just be a simple transfer of, you know, this is what you would have had to pay, here's your five thousand bucks. I don't know if that's an answer, could stop that problem.
Okay, um, let's, let's move along here, uh, a town hall, like this is the third sheet M. Wasted maintenance, zeros there, that's because you're not gonna offer any, uh, maintenance on the building or whatever, but they used to have, we used to, remember Bruce Bennett was hired at one, a couple, three years ago, and he got, he got dismissed, so. I, I'm not complaining about it, I'm just wondering.
No, we, we do have, we do have cleaning in the building, I just don't think we, we have put it.
Okay.
I'm trying to.
You, you might have dumped it.
What number is that?
It was on the third page.
It's the, uh, under town hall expenses, one-ten, ten-three-seven-twenty.
So we have twenty-five hundred dollars in, oh, eighteen thousand dollars in custodial services.
Yeah, that's what I didn't know, you might have dumped it someplace else, instead of having a dedicated person for maintenance, that's all. We had a thing right there for a dedicated person at that point, sometime.
Right, we have the contract.
Okay.
Scott, sorry, quick question, the insurance, does, is there insurance on meeting houses, is that included in line two-nine-five-zero buildings and contents? All of our property is insured. All right, so. Including, including the meeting house. And how, how do you insure the meeting house? Well, the, you know, the, the problem is, it doesn't really, it really has a placement value, because if there's a substantial loss, you're not gonna be able to replicate it. Right. So, you know, at that point, you're doing a, you're doing a partial restoration effect, right? I mean, it won't get the same, if it burns, for example.
What is the amount of our pension property insurance?
Well, it comes under general liability, right, so I think we have a ten million dollar umbrella. And then I think there's also, I'd have to double-check on what the individual coverage is of, of the umbrella. Might even be a window. Do you have the book there, listen with the, um, finders for the insurance?
I do not have the actual, um, insurance policies, no.
I can look it up on the binder, I just don't have it on the top of my head.
And then, how about under professional services, uh, first item, tax expense, we're not, found a number in there at, uh, tax expense, it was thirty-four, thirty-five a couple of years ago.
Well, we had put money in this year, which I think will just continue to use, and then I'm hoping you don't have to do another tax sale, if, if, by the time we get this one done, I wouldn't think we'd have to do another one right away.
So this one will happen in this fiscal year.
Yes.
Peter, the way that the tax sale expense gets, it gets charged back to the landowner that incurred that expense.
I know.
So there shouldn't be, there should be like, there might be like a couple hundred dollars, but nothing that we can really budget, we don't know.
The tax expenses, you know, the lawyer's fees and stuff, so I know that that all gets paid back when the property sold, so.
Yeah, and we charge it directly to that property, so when it sells, or when the homeowner pays, it just gets paid there.
Yeah.
Good.
Um, I don't know, I found that, I think not being numbered kind of screwed up here.
Sorry, I forgot that from last year.
That's all right, uh, bank charges, um, we didn't, we're not throwing a number, I think it was like ninety-nine hundred dollars or something like that, I think we have it someplace I saw a weird number like that sticking out.
For the, for the credit cards?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we don't, we're no longer charged for that?
Okay, well, thanks.
Good work, yes.
That's, that's fine, I'm just, you know, just asking questions. We like to hear the good stuff.
That's true.
Now Barker Street, there's no figure, or that we'd settle a contract for Barker Street, but there's no figure in this.
Because it's a twenty-four budget, we don't anticipate, the worst gonna be done this winter, so.
That, now the hundred thousand of the cap, or, uh, not that, it's under, uh.
Current capital?
Uh, yeah, it's under the capital, so for the truck, uh, you've got a hundred thousand for fire department or something, I think it's for the truck that we're or anticipation repairs for Rockingham truck, I think.
It's under reserve.
We're still waiting on the rest of the, the numbers.
Yeah, we won't know that till the meeting of the twentieth, because they, uh, the, the company that does the, like, that does the the restorations, we won't have those numbers until then. Does the tone contract work for all three of our fire departments, is that shared among the fire departments, or how's that apportioned? They each have their own contract for that, because they all carry their own pages, and so, and that, that's their, they're dispatched separately.
They're dispatched separately. Why would, why would that be?
Because they.
Doesn't, hey, no, have to know that I'm going to this fire, you're going to that fire.
Well. How do we, how do we get into, how much time do you have? There's no short answer to that, there is a protocol for responses, and there is a, um, a whole series of, uh, based on dispatching and the type of fire that it is, who is supposed to respond, but it, it's not always consistent how it works.
Can our consultant look at that?
That's exactly, one of the issues that will come out of this is just how that is working or not working.
Because it's, that's twenty thousand bucks.
firefighting is not cheap, volunteer firefighting is not cheap, the cost of the apparatus, the cost of the equipment the guys wear, the cost of the training, cost of communications, we're gonna have a radio grant coming for the next meeting. A hundred thousand dollars to be appraised for repeaters, digital radios, so they can share, uh, on a scene and have multiple, that's the other thing, every fire department has their own radio frequency, so you can get on a fire scene, and they might not literally be able to talk to each other, because if they're not on the same, if they can't go to a digital channel that's shared, they can't hear each other. Yeah, that was a lot of problems there, that was one of them, for sure. So, yeah, there's lots of issues.
Yeah, what was that, um, what do we want to do with the library, that we want to level funding like we, we were doing in the past through seventy-nine-two-fifty? This year, their, I remember, there were nine thousand dollars over that figure, so around three-eight-eight, something.
Actually, they came back with a revised budget and they are three-seven.
Oh, okay.
But they are gonna come back to you at some point for some deferred maintenance, so I think that was sort of what they were laying the groundwork for.
I remember the last time we did this, we, we approved the budget, and they keep that after a lot of, something different, but we stuck to our guns and said, sorry, we already got it.
And we're gonna look into this further, so when we talk about our debt service, but I know Alyssa and I are looking at, trying to figure out how many years we have library payments, and it's pretty substantial. It's quite a ways.
It's another ten, almost, like thirty-two, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a big, it's a big, right, it's a, a long number. So.
If we're gonna, if there's gonna be additional maintenance work, the piece we don't have, we don't really need to, I think, carefully.
I think you need an analysis, I mean, a real analysis, like that was coming at the building house.
Okay, I think I'll stop this real quick, time, for, for the time it is.
Yeah, so we'll do those updates, we'll bring this back to you, and then we'll have the other piece.
Do we have any, I don't see any votes.
Um, I don't know, I did not grab any on the way down.
Let's, uh, let's do financials, I have some questions there.
Okay. These are numbered, Peter.
I was just gonna say that.
I wanted, I wanted to get there first. We'll have the other ones numbered.
Well, well, I'll jump in while Peter's flipping through, the state civil fines, which is quite significant, five thousand double, where, those are traffic stops, what are those?
I believe most of that comes from the money that we go and ask them, well, twice a year, they do an, uh, accounting for that, and that's our portion of what the state police writes and other basic, anything that comes into the court system, where we get a local piece of it. I think that's where most of that comes from.
Yeah, and it's, it's traffic tickets and things like that.
And often, it seems like we don't see that money ever. So I, I just don't know if something, it's been, or follow-up is happening on that to make sure we get it?
I know it's been filed for on a more regular basis, and I, and I think that's also when we, when we, um, revise our fire reimbursement for things like illegal burns, I believe that's also where that money should start coming as well, because I think that's part of that B S A.
Yeah, I mean, because, I mean, when it does come down to whether we do have this town approval to hire out, we would get some, potentially get some of that money back through.
There's a piece that comes back, right.
As you would think, they would be writing more tickets in the town that would then come down to us as opposed to incidental tickets that they just happen to kept some money in our town.
Right.
Okay, here we go, uh, under revenue, I guess, uh, page two of the, the thirteen, recycling projects and C D is quite a ways up there for six, six months in. You put sixty-five or four-two-seven, for almost forty-three thousand right now. If that pace continues, we're gonna be at eighty-something for revenue on that lineup, which is good.
Which means people are going on the scale, that's what that means.
And, and garbage disposal seems to be on target at forty-three percent, a little low, but that's all right. The concern I have is the transfer of station permits.
Very low.
Yeah, that's a lot lower than that, though, I, I, I guess, I don't know if we're not checking. I guess I'll go get, I'll put my policeman's hat on, I guess, I'm standing down there. The shutter venue grant, grant, I looked at, that's not there anymore, so don't worry about that.
I don't believe they're extending that a third time, I think that one's done.
But they're doing actually pretty well. Everything with the, or, with the, um, theater revenue that's coming in, it's really that much money? It's forty-four thousand that came in, or is that? No, twenty thousand already. For special event revenue, page four thirteen.
Page four, okay, I'm gonna get there, I was looking at the other page, but it's not with the.
The thing with the special event revenue is that a lot of that gets paid out on the expense side.
Right, but still, I mean, when you add that in and then you add the expense, they kind of, they're, they're pretty balanced at this point, I mean, which is great. Even if you take out the grant.
The hope is, when we do more of these, especially like the Charlie, you know, they're, they're doing the, um, concert series now, and Ray's Honor and a few other items, so you should see more, more of those, uh, types of events, too. And the Rattleboro Select Board voted themselves a big raise. They're giving six thousand bucks.
Sixty.
Also, also, they're paying.
Should I add that to the budget?
Also, they're, they're paying for childcare for people too, where it's like, there's all these new benefits for select board members of Rattleboro. Very generous.
Interesting.
I, I do be satisfied this little electric heater I was in.
We don't ask for much. She's frozen, yeah.
On page seven, what would the, uh, recycling expenses, materials and supplies, hundred sixty-six thousand, what the hell are you spending on? I think one hundred and forty-five percent.
So that's because Larry buys boots and sweatshirts or something.
That's part of that, right. Okay.
So we have to, if that's gonna be a, a regular allow, we should update that line.
Well, it shouldn't be, because once you get an allocation, since you're gonna do it three days a week, it's not like you're a full-time guy where you're getting uniform allowance, so.
Right.
Yeah, it should not be.
We'll have to have that.
Page eight of thirteen. Remember last month, we moved that, uh, one-ten, ten-three-seven-fifty-eighty-nine line up into the recycling expenses, they get the true cost. But then the next line down, you show one-ten, ten-three-seven-sixty, forty-five for the same item, that's got zero on it, can we fix me with that one?
The line can't go away, it just, it'll sit there until next year, then it'll go away.
Yeah, all right, I just, just wondered, what's, I know we moved it up to get to true cost, uh, because we never used a budget name money for that. Uh, we just saw a waste as well, that's why we always end up shooting the money down, down to our budget, so. Is it, uh, that, that's why that lost it there, where we are. Is it, uh, that's, that's why that lost it there where we are. County taxes, I'm just gonna stay the same. Hopefully. The line goes more. Insurances, are we pretty much done with those, Alyssa? They could, it's seventy five, seventy eight percent? Or we play some more coming on that.
We have one more quarter to pay.
We got one. I thought we were paying that half. Six months, no? Okay. Okay, that's it. I mean.
Other questions?
Yeah, go for it.
Uh, page, page five of thirteen, five thousand dollar IRS, I will TV that in the past that I see is, it's under adjusted budget. What is that about?
That was added in there because there was a lot of. With the, um, W twos that were made and we were pretty certain that we were going to get a fine from the government. Haven't seen a fine yet, so maybe we're good.
Can release that?
I, I, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for not making those kinds of mistakes, you know?
They give you the first time. If you keep doing it, they don't give you anymore.
Okay. Anybody ask any question on budgets? Finance? We can let, we can let Alyssa off the book then. Okay. Yeah, let's go on to the, I think to the, those orders, oh, to the one sector. Then items for the twenty twenty two meeting. We got town moderator appointment that we did this, but thank God it was. We only have one aspect today. Oh, we don't wanna, it's a, we advertise it on the website and stuff, nobody. I asked a couple of the people and I've never heard back from them, so.
To be accepted. Oh, be accepted.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. You you talked to Scott about, we need a formal, you know, letter that you wanted to run.
That'll be good, you know?
So he, you know, he's done the village for some years now, so. Anything else on the item for?
Well, we should have the, I'll have the updated fire reimbursement ordinance that we talked about, adding such and for production. So that we can have some teeth in it as well as we should have the radio grant on there as well.
And we need to, we need to also bring up the, uh, amount of money for that fire study if we're gonna do, uh.
I spoke with them today and I'm still waiting to hear if they're, if USDA is gonna participate. So it's not a dead issue. Under that rural business development section, there is some possibility that they might fund some, but we might be okay. So under USDA. There's a community, there's. Yeah, there's two sections, right? There's the community facilities section and then there's this rural business development. Well, under rural built. Stumbled over this. Under the rural business development section, they are reviewing the the fire feasibility submission. And and I should hear from them surely as to whether or not it's fundable under that section, including. The Saxton River portion, which they're not eligible for under the facilities.
Okay.
But that. So it's still not dead yet.
Okay.
Yes. And if they do announce, if they do grant it, then we'll have it on for the twentieth. Obviously, you're the one to get it approved.
Okay, good. I know that everybody was anxious to get that going, so I just.
Yes, very.
Okay, uh, then the items for the joint board, January thirtieth. Okay, so we got time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but I'm not.
Should we talk about policing?
It'll be too late to put it in in our budget. I think we just have to go with putting it to the town for a vote.
Yeah, well, we're gonna save, but go place all over and go from there.
Because when you start having the policing voted, then you have the fire department budget living and then you have the towns running. And we go through this cycle every ten years or five years and it gets shot down. So it's it's an endless loop.
Okay, other business, uh, start with the correct, nothing. So.
Um, no.
Uh, the only thing I have is the county report items, uh, was requested that December fifteenth is a drop dead. Date for like a report of this law board, which I'll be working on this week. Anybody else that has reports in the committees or anything else that wants to have a report in there, just to get it to. The lady over there with the public.
Exec assist. At Rock, yeah. I'm not the title, that's the email.
Why, man? Okay. Hey, there's no need for executive session. Shall I get a motion, Joe Jaren?
Still blue.
Second?
Second, second.
Maybe second, I'll pay with. Right here.